Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May ninth Winchester planning board meeting. We have four of our members here. We've got town assistant town engineer coming in. Let's make sure he gets in. In order to, we are being recorded both via Vencam, thank you much Vencam and also by Zoom. And we are putting new Zoom bomb protocols in in that if you want to speak, no one is allowed to mute. Unmute themselves if you wish to speak during the public, the times when the public are allowed to speak. Please raise your hand and then we will unmute you so that you can speak. Planning board members are all co-chair and co-hosts so they can unmute themselves as well. So. Why don't we do a roll call vote please? E Ching Scott.
I hear President.
Sally Dale.
I'm present.
Nick Rosatos.
Present.
And I'm dear Jerius, I'm present as well. I should actually. Switch to my other computer so you don't look at my chin. Hold on a second. Okay, now I'm looking at the right computer. We also have with us this evening, our recording secretary Nancy Pocari and assistant town engineer Brian Manter. E Ching, are you available to do the emceeing of the documents today?
I'm a little bit more fragile today, so I can try. But.
That's fine if you if you're, I can get it. Carrie, I'm trying to make you co-host. Yeah, Carrie Leighton, you want to announce your presence?
I am here.
Excellent, thank you. We have a whole house. So why don't I, I'll share and. Let's get the show on the road.
You know what? I could do it. I think I I got it. DM. You want me to do that?
I mean, it's it's okay. I've got it right here, so.
Anyway. Just taking me a while to load it.
So while while that's happening, while we get to the agenda, there are a few updates I wanted to talk about. Where there is emerging housing opportunities forum, which is coming up this Thursday and at one PM. And in a sec, E Ching, I'll ask you if you want to give just a brief overview because you'll be presenting there on behalf of the planning board.
Sure.
The. ADU, as I think people know by now, the state has approved the town's ADU bylaw. And E Ching's been working with the planning or with the building department to get the forms in place for that. We've had, we opened up. Submissions for the new town planner. We've had five resumes. That have come in and I think we want to talk about setting up a search committee again. We'll have to do that from scratch because we've disbanded the old one. The eighty to eighty-nine church friendly forty B local initiative project is going before, I think their second meeting before the ZBAs tomorrow. The planning board needs to in person sign the rocky ledge subdivision decision. And so it would be, we're already almost a day late, so if you could. I will work with Suzanne Gill, her administrative secretary to get that ready tomorrow and. If you can make it to town hall and sign it, otherwise I will come and. Knock on your door and get your signature. So we can talk about that later. There we go. We had a bit of a. Unexpected notice from our consultants, the state has given us for to do the MBTA three A zoning. Compliance. And that they told us that they had already spent all the money they had on the project working with us. And. That's a little surprising because we only first saw maps last week, so we're trying to figure out what the heck's going on. And. We were hoping to get you, there's still. There's still some significant, well, I don't know if it's significant, but there's still some work and pulling together a couple of districts into the map so that we can pull a couple out. And that work was supposed to be completed and that that. I don't know where, I'll let you know what happens when I figure out what's going on with that.
Great, that's great and encouraging. I mean, not encouraging that they ran out of money, but it's encouraging that the maps are are.
Yeah, it's I I I, we were supposed to get. My understanding was we were gonna get three models run plus. Written zoning. And so. I think our just determination of how many models were run is different. Because. I only think that they gave us one. And they seem to think they gave us many, so. We'll figure it out.
Well, it's a good thing we got our budget passed.
Well, it is.
Although I suppose, you know, I guess you're gonna, you're gonna speak with them and see what's going on first and.
I'm gonna see what's going on. I've asked them, so they're gonna give us a breakdown of what they've spent and what they've spent it on. Or I should say how many hours. I don't know how much the state is paying for them. Then they're gonna give us a breakdown of how much they think it would require in order to finish the project. They have. They've suggested there might be some people we could contact to get more funding, so as soon as I get the breakdown, I'll look into that. We have approximately thirteen thousand dollars left in professional services to the end of this fiscal year. And I'm setting, we have, I'm setting aside. No, sorry, that's expenses. That's our entire expenses budget. Oh. Minus what we are expecting to pay. Form and place. So we have about thirteen thousands left in our entire expensive budget, so depending, you know. I'll let you know as as soon as I know how much money they think it'll cost. We don't want to stop the process now because they're right in the middle of doing this last.
No, we don't. No, we don't want to stop it at all. I mean, it's crucial we get this done early on and and get a handle on it early on.
Sally, your hand is up.
Yes, my hand is raised because I'm I'm sitting in my living room because I still don't have upstairs. Let me take it off blur. I still don't have upstairs. Wifi, so I'm using my living room and my living room floor. Has an exhibit of form and place. Printouts that I have been arranging in in order geographically, but also, you know, with comments and everything. So that I could understand and then in our next planning board meeting next week. Walk us through what these slides say, because what I've discovered is that. The different scenarios for the different areas of North Main Street were presented to us, but in a somewhat. Just jointed way, and this is a tool that I'm trying to put together for the planning board. So that we can sit down maybe in person next week, which is the twenty, no, which is the. What what is our, what is the meeting we said?
It's the sixteenth.
The sixteenth, okay, um, to to look at what I'm putting together and my question to you, DM, is. Whether I can use some of that money that's sitting there to call form in place and go over this with them like in a Zoom. And ask them if they want, if they have any comments about how I'm presenting this. Because I'm just took everything that was in their slideshows and made little videos just to order it.
I think that's. That's. I don't know, to be honest, that's that's.
So the question is, do they need the whole thirteen thousand?
No, they don't. No, no, they don't get thirteen thousand.
What?
No, their contract is only has seven thousand left.
Oh, seven, okay.
Their contract has seven, and one of the things we have to talk about, and we're running a bit late this evening because we haven't even gotten to approving the minutes. We're gonna have to put those off till later in the meeting. Is the form and place is waiting for us to start looking at their. What they provided and giving them further guidance. So we're gonna talk about that somehow. I think we're gonna have to move that to the end of the meeting. And talk about. Our scheduling for the next several weeks.
Good, okay.
What are we going to do with North Main Street in order to get them some guidance? And I think that was. And the MBTA stuff, oh, and and the search committee for the town planner.
Right, right.
So.
I will hold, but I'm gonna continue to try to make this lucid so that when we do have a planning board meeting about this. And I do suggest that we do it in person because it's great big wall visuals, right, then. We will have a way of gathering our thoughts to give feedback to form in place because we have not had a way to do that so far.
Right. Okay, so. E Ching, we have two minutes left before we have to open up our hearing on ten sixteen Mount Vernon. E Ching, you want to say something about the the forum coming up on eleven?
So the forum is at the Jinx, I think at one o'clock. And it will be three speakers. One person will be representing the sanctuary properties, the the River Street property as well as the Cambridge Street one. Where there will be close to two hundred units available and how to apply for some of the affordable units. And then the select board, Michael Benning Court is gonna present, I think it is the Washington Cross project. And then I will be presenting sort of the the nuts and bolts of ADUs and how they're gonna be regulated and how how to how to get a permit, those those sorts of things. So yeah, three housing opportunities. Think is what it's featuring.
Okay.
And you're gonna have the brochure and the FAQ?
I have the brochure, the FAQ and, you know, overview of what the bylaw says and what you can do within them.
And are the building forms gonna be, like, they could leave the meeting and go online and fill out an online form?
Yeah, yeah, the building department has been working on an online permit form and. With with some of the structure that the ADU working group was working on and and they should have that in place and, you know. Can you can test it out?
You know, it's really exciting.
Yeah.
Thanks, E Ching.
Thanks, it sounds great.
So let us. Move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the. Continued public hearing on ten sixteen Mount Vernon Street. So just. Let's let's call that, let's open that up and get a. Motion to open up the hearing, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And let's just do a roll call about Carrie.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
E Ching.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
And I say as well.
So we we have everything we need now, I guess, to wrap this up by the end of the session.
I I think that we have heard from all of the. Parties involved in terms of we have, we have our consultant's report, we have, we've heard from all of the different boards. And then I think that. Oops, sorry, let me get back to my screen. E Ching is, can you? Move to. The. The. The consultant's report. That's the one thing I think that's new that hasn't been presented before. And I know that we have with us this evening. Mr. Levitt, I'm gonna make you a co-host so that you can unmute yourself, but I'll ask you not to unmute yourself just yet. Hold on a second, you are a co-host. Mr. McConnell, I believe you were also. Give a co-host, okay? And. Is there any way you could make that a little bigger, E Ching? Okay, so. Are. The board. Contracted with the fifty-three G consultant, Wendy Frontero. Who did an analysis of the property. And its context and its historical context and its physical context within town center. She took into consideration national landmark. Or that, I'm gonna get this wrong, the wording wrong. The national standards for. Historical render adding to historical structures. And this is all in the packet, E Ching, if you could just scroll down to the bottom. Where her final description is. So there's her evaluation. This is just talking about protection under various things. Let me read it here. On the scale of individual building proposed third story addition is. Some colonial revival details. However, the literal appropriation of those elements window size and rhythm, brick stucco signing molded parapet along with its lack of any appreciable setback from the historic building. Do not let the addition clearly read as new construction it actually is. Words of the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. A new edition should be compatible but not differentiated enough so that it is not confused as historic or original to the building. And then if you scroll to the next page, please.
I think you said not differentiated, but I think you you meant differentiated. You added the word.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me reread that. A new, can you go back there? Let me reread that. A new addition should be comparable but differentiated enough so that it is not confused as historic or original to the building. And it continues, proposed third floor addition as another fifty percent of the height. Of the existing low scale buildings significantly impacting its historic scale and character, lack of any appreciable setback from the wall planes. Further prevents proposed addition from reading as separate from the historic building. It goes on to speak of the neighborhood scale, saying that it's the proposed third story addition is out of character with surrounding district. In height and flat roof form. It also says it will affect views along the street sket and across the CBD by presenting an uncommon blank vertical wall when viewed from quill rotary. And by obscuring views of the Kupla on the police and fire station from Co-Rotary. And views of the first congregational church when traveling down Mount Vernon Street from the east. The consultant's opinion is that the proposed addition does not meet the requirements of the vision of town of interest is only bylaws nor of the Secretary of the Interior's standards as referenced above. So that is the consultant's report. So. I have discovered that our. Procedure for dealing with special permits and public hearings. Is lacking because it's essentially assumes that we're gonna do it in one sitting and we go through this multiple times. So. I think what's appropriate right now is I know that. The. Petitioner has a response to this and he's brought with him. Mr. Levitt, you have brought. Hold on one second, see. You brought Mr. McConnell with you. And you had actually, oh, there is actually in the public record a response from Mr. Levitt. Can you find that?
Oh, yeah. Um, there's, I think there's this too, from the housing partnership.
Yes, right, thank you.
But here.
So here's a response from Mr. Levitt detailing the views from the Quill Rotary. If you scroll down. And then. He points out that you can still see the public safety building and behind it, and then here's a view. Looking at the. Church steeple on Mount Vernon with a.
No, up the hill.
Up the hill, but you're on Mount Vernon looking up the hill.
Right, yeah.
And this is a rendering of what the building would look like. So is there anything further of note on this? I'm going through this quickly. This is on the public record. I just wanna, he also know it's the side, the heights of buildings in the neighborhood. Indicating in in his determination that. There are many buildings that are three floors or two and a half stories. And points out that the historical commission voted in favor. Five zero with one abstention. And then the last thing, thank you for pointing that out, E Ching, there is a memo from the Housing Partnership Board. And the Housing Partnership Board. Details the. A number of reasons why the Partnership Board is in favor of this project. The fact that they're creating a fully ADA compliant unit. That these are, these units are historically on the lower end in terms of rent. These are all rental. And that makes them accessible to more people, that it is. Very accessible to the T. And. They go on to, I believe there's a vote in here eventually. And is there a vote?
No. Yeah, it's at the front. It's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, six O, right.
Six O with one abstention. And that was me, I believe I abstained because I can't bear that. Okay, so those are the, again, these are all in the public records, so I'm just going through them very quickly. So at this point, if the board. Would, okay, I'd like to open it up to the to the proponents so they can respond to the. On to the. Feedback we've gotten so far. Is that okay with you folks? Okay, Mr. Levitt, Mr. McConnell. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, that's good.
And do you need to? Do you want to display? Do you need control of the screen?
Yes, please.
You, oh, actually, you're co-host, so you should have that already.
Hold on one second, please.
But I should note, everyone who's coming late, we are, we are. If you want to speak during the public hearing months, please put your hand up. We're not allowing people to unmute because we've had some pretty nasty Zoom bombers. So we're trying to keep the disruption to a minimal. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Levitt.
Yeah, we're trying to set it up so I, we can show. In reference to the. The consultant. Basically, we're gonna start with the Lyceum Building. But more importantly, what I want to start off with, I want to explain to the board, if no one has met me before. That I am not a newbie in town. I'm not a developer that's coming into town and basically trying to develop something. I've owned this building for, I believe, for about eighteen years. I basically have been in town for forty years. I've raised my family here. My daughter. Is raising her family here. My great grandfather came here in eighteen sixty. My my grandmother was raised here, so I have to emphasize to this board. That I am not a newbie. I've been here for many years. And I, now I want to go to the consultant. And basically, I. I want to explain that quickly on my behalf of what I seen that what she was doing. I'm not a historical person. That's what I got John McConnell, but the building just adjacent from me. In other words. Right next door, actually. Is allowed three and a half stories. So what she said makes no sense. The building across the street from me, the book and building. Has three stories, two and a half to three. The building behind me has three stories. The building behind me on that, the Albiani building. I believe has four stories. So I I don't know where this person is getting her information from it. It makes no sense to me. So anyway, I would like to introduce. John McConnell. Who John McConnell is. A consultant to me on the historical aspect of this. I believe John has been in town for thirty-five to forty years, not exactly sure the amount of time.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. And. He has a pretty good resume, but I'm gonna let you talk about your resume, John. And you can take it from here as far as the historical aspect of it.
Okay, I don't need to toot my own horn, but I've had close to fifty years experience designing buildings. Renovating historic buildings and teaching architectural history at Boston College. And I know, so I have. Fairly reasonable credentials in the field of looking at historic buildings. I I would echo what John said about buildings in the neighborhood. Add also the the pink building down. On the other side of the fire station is three full stories. And Converse Place Building is four, I believe. In any case, the idea that this is. That adding a third story to this building would be somehow anomalous in the district is is simply wrong. And the other thing is that this, we have to understand that. This is a very nice building. It's not a precious building. It's not a landmark. And the way you treat expansion of. Of of fairly ordinary buildings is different than the way you would treat. You know, the the little bank building across the street or something like that, if you were adding on to that. The the consultant points out that the guidelines stipulate that. The addition needs to be set back and treated with materials that are different from the original building and all that sort of thing. And if you were adding on to, say, the Woburn Public Library, that's precisely what you would want to do. It worked out beautifully there with a glass box on the back of a very historic building. In this case, urban architecture that abuts other buildings and is simply one. Piece of a much larger fabric here. I think doesn't want to have that kind of lunar lander put on the top of the building, but instead wants to. Be done in such a way that the completed building looks for all intents and purposes, original. Without compromising the detail that's already there. And so that's what we've tried to do. We thought that was the most appropriate thing to do. The historical commission has agreed with us on that matter. We, in fact, we went to them with a third story that was a different material that was stucco so as to not. Appear to be, you know, the brick of the second story here, and they recommended that we make it out of brick so that it looks precisely like. The original building, and so we've made that change based on their recommendation. So in the end, I I think that the that the consultant's. Assessment of this is is more of an opinion than it is. Anything else, and I would offer that my opinion differs from that. And and there you go. I mean, it's it's really in a matter, a matter of opinion about how you. Uh, and uh, and there you go. I mean, it's, it's really in a matter, and a, a matter of opinion about how you uh add on to an older building. So uh, I'm not sure what else to say in that regard, uh, but th- those are my opinions in this regard, and I think Mr. Levitt has done. A, a pretty good job of uh attempting to um. Keep the, uh, keep the building uh as part of a responsible piece of the historic fabric here. The other thing that I would say is not architectural. Uh, and and now I speak simply as a long-term member of this town, uh, and that is that it's providing a significant. Uh, uh, component of housing to uh, to the town, so. Four more uh affordable units in the center of town within walking distance of all the necessary services and without requiring parking. Is a real boon here. I, uh, you know, I fear for the future of this town if we don't begin here and now to address the issue. Of affordable housing, uh, as I'm sure all of you have seen, as you drive around town, about every fourth block, there's a, a. Substantially nice uh older home that has been torn down and replaced with uh some sort of um pretty unattractive McMansion that's twice the size. Uh, what we're doing, what we're seeing here is a, a rush. To make it impossible for young people and people of modest means to live in this town. And uh, that's one of the big benefits that Mr. Levitt seems to want to provide here, so. Um, that's, that's my say uh with my citizen cap rather than architectural historian cap. I'll let it go at that.
John?
Okay, is that, do you have anything more you'd like to present?
Well, the, the only thing I want to emphasize is, is that the two buildings. Behind me are three and four stories high. And the building, the Lyceum Building will be eventually three and a half stories. That's very important. That makes. Her opinion to me, anyway. It's moot. I mean. You, you got three and four-story buildings all around me, and she says it doesn't go with the district. Makes no sense. That's my opinion.
Okay, oh.
I, I have a question, um, which is uh, the, the report makes a big deal out of uh the fact that. We would block the view of the congregational church at some point, which I'm not sure that's, that's true. But the question is, if those views or of the Public Safety Building are so precious. Do we have a, a visual corridor um? In, in place in this town? Uh, has anyone bothered to? Think that that's worth protecting legally somehow? Is there an easement for that?
Uh, we, we do not have that. I know that people are, some people are concerned about that, but there is nothing. In the zoning, as far as I know, which provides a view protection.
This is clear.
I'm sorry, so Sally?
A point of correction on that. There are some view per- cor- protections in our bylaws to scenic views, particularly water. So, but that's.
Is that from the con, is that the zoning or is that in the town?
From CBD.
Okay, okay, I took that.
So I just, I, I just want to say it's not that we don't protect views, but we don't have what Mr. McConnell asked about, which is specific. View sheds, I guess you would call them. Um, I've, I've. I don't know that people do that, but it seems like a thing you could do. I just don't know.
It is something that is done. So.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Much appreciated.
Someone else has their hands up.
Um, let us, right, so at this point, um, typically, we've gone through the public. Um, comment process, and since we're kind of winging it at the moment. I would like to get some idea from how the board wants to continue. Uh, at this point, having heard from all of our consultants, the board would start making its, having its own discussion. Uh, about all of the consultants' reports, responses, and. So if the board wants to open this up to public comment, um, we can do so. It's kind of a departure from our process.
I feel like we, we've had maybe four of these meetings already, and we haven't had the opportunity to. Ask questions maybe once, um, we did, but I, I do have some questions for the proponent.
Okay, um, Todd, is the rest of the board field? Shall we just go and have the board have questions right now?
Well, so, I mean, one thing is I know that there are people here from Design Review. Um, and um, I, and community members. Um, and from Housing Partnership. Um, and so it, it, just amongst that, um, there's people recommending both sides of the question. And so the question would be whether E Ching's question and any other questions that we would have would be answered. Best by first hearing concise remarks.
I'm, I'm not sure that they will be because, I mean, we, we heard the concise recommendation in letter form from them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, so.
I, I, I had a, I had a few comments I wanted to share at some point.
Sure, yeah, I mean, right now, it's a process question. And so the Design Review, the Housing Partnership, all of those people have had an opportunity to present us their opinions through their. Their documents that they sent us, so I think. I, I think that, you know, when we get to, you know, whether we want to listen to other members of the community who aren't on those committees, I think that's an important one. But that part was, you know, that's, that starts at the beginning of this process when we opened up the hearing. That is, we did have public input time in that.
Okay, good.
I think I would like to get the board having a discussion now, if that's okay.
Yes.
And so um, why don't, E Ching, you, you raised your voice first, so why don't you go ahead with your question?
This is short and it's not sort of a, a overall thought about it, but if you could go back to the other image, please, um, um, the proponents. The historical one. Um, so uh, my question, and I got a little bit from the Historical Commission notes, but did this um ten to sixteen. Uh, Mount Vernon Building ever have a third floor and whether or not. And I'm not a, um, detective, architectural detective, but you see the um facade of the Lyceum Building next door. And there are these like bands, vertical bands there, and are those maybe um vestiges of an existing third floor on ten sixteen?
What? Uh, it did not have a third floor. Ten to sixteen never had a third floor.
And can I please ask a proponent?
Oh, right.
We've never found, we looked for drawings in the historical archives of the town. And as of nineteen fifty-five. Um, there wasn't, and I, there's nothing pre nineteen fifty-five that I could see. Um, but I see what you, in other words, like there's chimneys. That go to my building that rise above that building.
Right.
There's a lot of things. That suggest there was a third story, but I can't say that there was.
That's interesting because our bylaws give a lot more leeway for those who had had a historical third story, so that would. It would yield a lot if we were able to see that. Um, and then second question would be, um, there were a lot of questions for. A setback, um. You know, uh, setback from the front and side, and, and I thought, I saw in the notes for the Historical Commission that it was because of maybe. How somehow structurally not, what, what was, what's the reason for not having a setback?
Well, I, I have, in other words, in the, in the back, we did set it back.
Right.
Back eight feet. We, we worked with our Abada and over six to nine months, and we. We figured out a way that we could set it back so he was happy. Then what happened was, is I tried to work and set anything else back, and my architect. And my historical consultant said, there's no way you would destroy this building, meaning it would. First of all, the expense associated with it, but more importantly than that, it would, it wouldn't look good at all.
Right. Those are my questions. I have comments, but I'll, I'll let out others if they have questions.
I have one question. Um, it, I remember, Mr. Levitt, that you said that you don't um have or even encourage. Section eight tenants in this building, even though these apartments are exceedingly affordable, lowercase a, meaning. They're not official affordable housing, but they're priced to be lowercase a affordable. Um, but I noticed in the Historical Commission report, it said that there are section eight. Um, residents, and I wondered if you could clarify that.
There has been several section eight residents over eighteen years that I've, have owned it. Um. That's all I can say.
Right, okay, so.
And then it's the middle six thousand, I believe, is nineteen hundred a month for a one-bedroom apartment. And I think that um we're below the nineteen hundred. It's.
Right, right.
It's, it, it, it would fit in. I could get section eight in two minutes. I, but again, I'm not trying to not. Section eight. There was a woman who lived there for many years, and she was on section eight. Unfortunately, she. Fell ill and uh she's not, no longer the, living there. And there was another person living there also that was on section eight. Uh. That's what I can say about section eight.
So it, it is an option. It's not something that you prefer not to um.
No, no, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, 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 okay, I might have missed.
Everyone, everyone's got to live. We, we can't, we can't all have.
Yeah.
Two million, a million and a half dollar homes.
That's a helpful answer. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um. Any other questions, and then we can go around to um people making comments and statements?
There had been some discussion about whether the roof would be pitched like the historic one that, I know it wasn't on your building, it was next door, but. Can you say a little about what went into the final roof design, choosing the flat roof?
I got a reference to John McConnell on this.
Uh, yeah, simply uh having the addition be in the, in the same style that the building is in. Uh, if we put a pitched roof on this building, it would recast it as some sort of odd. Odd hybrid uh style here.
Yeah, I just wonder if the building next to it were to recreate the, the third floor, if they went with a pitched roof, if we would have kind of a.
Yeah. I don't, I, I don't know, um, but uh, in any case, you know, my concern was to uh, to keep it in the same style that it already is.
Okay.
But, excuse me, John, don't they have to duplicate the Lyceum Building to the original structure, how it was?
I don't know. I do, I don't know the answer to that. I, I think. All, all that we've been told is that they could recreate what was there.
Okay. You're better with them words than me, John.
Um.
I, I do have some questions for the Design Review, but um.
Hold on, hold on one sec. Let's go to, to Nick. Nick, do you have any questions?
I just had comments, so I, I can, I can wait until uh the question round is.
I don't have any questions, um, so then I guess that's the question round is over. And I've lost my Zoom screen. Hold on one second, folks, so I can see you again. Where did you all go? Okay, that's annoying. Um, well. I may have to drop out for a bit. Um, I can't find you.
Were you looking for DM?
I'm looking for, Zoom has disappeared from my computer.
Although.
I can see you. Your camera is on.
I know, but I can't see any of you. I can't see anything, so um, why don't we move to the, to the uh, E Ching, if you have more questions.
I do.
Then, then someone else will have to make the Design Review people co-hosts, because I can't find a window to do that.
So we have Julie here and we have Jamie here. Those are who I see. Am I getting everybody? I guess so.
Um, if, if I could start my questions, wait, wait till DM.
No, no, go ahead. Don't wait for me. I have to, I have to.
Okay. So um, it seems like Designer You had a couple of concerns of the exterior, and one of which was um seeing the blank wall. And from, from my perspective, I was walking around downtown, just imagining where that blank wall would be. Um, and you know, as a pedestrian, I. As, as a train rider, yes, I can evidently see the blank wall, or say a Google zoomer from um air, I can see the blank wall. Um, as for being a pedestrian, you know, using the sidewalks and not being on the street itself. Um, I can see the blank wall perhaps from um, you know, crossing the street on Main and um. In front of Bookends, and then it disappears as I'm in front of Lucia. So. And it, it's a portion, perhaps, you know, a fifth of the wall. So um, my question, A. Um, that I have no follow-up question is where, where is the bank blank wall that you're seeing is sort of dominant here?
John, can you go back to that rendering uh from the, from the circle? The other one, looking in the other direction. There you are. That's the blank wall she's talking about.
Well, I, I've just made Julie Reiman Schneider and um.
Jamie.
Jamie are both co-hosts, so you can unmute yourselves now if you want to respond to E Ching's question.
Thank you. Um, this is Jamie. I think Tracy is here too.
Oh, good, yes, I see.
Yep, there she is down there.
Yeah.
For a co-host.
So um, yeah, so here you do see the blank wall, and I think um in terms of the view corridor. Um, we had a photograph in our meeting minutes that was quite um illustrated, our concern about. And the historical consultant mentioned the cupolas and steeples.
Right, I'm asking about the blank wall right now?
I'm sorry?
I'm asking about the blank wall.
Oh, you just want to know about the blank wall?
Right, so is this um offense, like, is, is that the portion that we're looking at, is that the offensive part to it, and is there?
Um, I think that that is indeed what the blank wall refers to.
Okay.
I also have more comments if we get a chance to say.
Sure, but um, I just wanted to follow up on this. So, yeah. So there is some articulation here in that the band up, uh, above the third floor wraps around so that it doesn't end. Uh, as the historical blank wall on the Lyceum Building does, so it doesn't just cut itself off. And if, and it seems like the brick also wraps around in the same way that the facade does. So is, is that offensive? Um, is, is that, is there more that the? Is the, is there more that the proponent can do in order to make that less um visually, you know, uh. You know, maybe some kind of articulation of the brick there to, to imitate, because they cannot put a window there because it is firewall. Um, to alleviate that, like one bay of window, like a faux window or some kind of um Trump lawyer kind of a thing, would that then resolve this?
My opinion, I'm actually an architect, and I've lived in town for almost forty years, and I work on historic buildings too. Um, but my opinion is no, that would, that would not really solve it, and I must say the blank wall has something to do with the view corridor too, enassing. And if you stand at the Rotary or um off of where Bookends is, Bookends is a beautiful building. It is three stories. The Lyceum Block was three stories. Those two end buildings frame. The North Mark Bank and the Cupola, and if you picture the Lyceum being built back up to where it was, and then the ten sixteen. Building stepping down to the North Mark Bank to the Cupola, you can see what our concern was about massing. And view corridors, and I think the preservation consultant mentioned that too. And then real quickly, I just want to say, um, everyone on our committee, I think everyone. Several people were really disappointed with the units, thinking they were not. They're very narrow. They have windows in the bedroom, and I realize we're talking about the outside, but I think we felt like. There wasn't a redeeming feature in that regard. Um, and then also, if I could just quickly say.
No, I'm sorry. We, we need to move on to another.
Okay, thank you so much.
Um, but I, I tend to, if I could follow up, I tend to agree that um what the consultant had recommended, which was a, a differentiated uh massing. Um, apart from the original, and that, you know, a different materiality, um, you know, different uh setback. Would not align with the, with the building. It, it, it seems like the extrusion of the brick is sort of a good solving of that. And um, even from this view here, this and the forty-eight Mount Vernon, which is the pink building, um, beyond the Public Safety Building. Um, are similar um in that they have that extruded, and I, I looked. Up the forty-eight Mount Vernon, because I spent a lot of time in there. Um, it, it's a nineteen-ten building, so it is not a contemporary building. It was in nineteen-ten. Um, so I think that the consultants, um. In comment about historical buildings not be having flat roof is in error there.
Okay, thank you, E Ching. Um. Nick, you were waiting on your comments.
I I wanted to either, I I sent a slide that I wanted to show, I could try to share the screen. Yicheng, are you able to show the graphic, or should I try, should I try?
Yeah. Can you, can you drive?
Yeah, I'll try, yeah, let me, let me see what I can do here, let me, yeah. Okay, this will stop others sharing, yes, okay, fine. Basic. Okay, can everyone?
Nope.
Everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, I just wanted to say that. I mean, voting against this does not mean we're we are anti-growth, we want to be a successful center, we are pro-growth. And I just wanted to share this section seven three of the zoning bylaws. Which shows a map. And all of the historic buildings are are in red and the the green buildings are non-historic. And their historic buildings are are meant to be protected, the green buildings are good candidates for redevelopment. And you can see from this. This map, it's it's. What is it, Historic Resources in the Center Business District, seven point three point four of the of the zoning bylaw. Um, I guess the point that I wanted to make with this, and I'll just, I'll just be quick, is that there are many, many places in Winchester that. Are are perfect candidates for development and. Um, we've we've got a lot of potential in this center for redevelopment of many one-story buildings that are nondescript and nonhistoric. Throughout the center, so I just wanted to share. Uh, those. Those with you. These are all the ones that are marked in green. On that. On that diagram, on that map. And I'll go back to the original slide. Um, I I guess with regard to this building, I would say that even though we don't know who the architect was. It was clearly designed, we know it was it was a sophisticated building. Um, it was done in, the fact that it was done in eighteen ninety instead of nineteen twenty is interesting, it places is in time. The building is intact, that's one of the definitions that we look for in a historic building. It was designed by an architect, probably an architect of some renown, even though we don't know who it is. Um, so it's not just what you're looking at, but it also what it has to do with its time and place in history. Um, it's intact, it has integrity, the National Register, US Department of Interior. It it's part of that, and there was, I guess, a study, the the National Register in July of eighty six. I think it's a bad precedent to start messing with the very few historic buildings that we have in town. I I think we're going to start to see other additions that look bad on the few historic buildings that we have. The vista is not an insignificant thing, I think that's important. And I guess just some of the some of the zoning bylaws, seven point three point eighteen incentives to restore additional floors. Additional stories should be designed to minimize visual impact on the proportions and massing of the original structure. I think this completely changes the massing of the original structure. Uh, they, the the zoning bylaw continues, the most common approach to meeting this guideline is to step back additions from the facade or side of the building plane. And there are, there are a number of these, section seven three seventeen, design should be for the mutual benefit of its immediate neighbor. I mean, this would severely limit the vistas, I I think, and that's my opinion. Again. You know, seven point three point fifteen, site plan review consideration must be given to the protection and preservation of existing historic structures, vistas and natural features. I I think basically this is, it's a bad precedent, and I think it's not just this building, but it's other buildings that are in danger of having. Uh, bad additions put on them. I know that, I mean, parking is often used as an excuse. But that doesn't mean it also isn't an issue, that there are going to be more people competing for a finite number of spaces. So those are my initial comments. There's also the Winchester twenty thirty. Plan, the the plan, it was basically talked about this particular area. And it talks about, it it this particular area is a preservation and evolving opportunity area. And it basically says that, you know, some areas in the town center could offer opportunities for contextual infill, which this is not. Uh, including mixed-use development that incorporates commercial and residential uses. But the area's historic resources and character should be protected and supported through sensitive design and site planning. And for some areas of the town center, stronger preservation protections may also be needed, and this is from. The Winchester's master plan twenty thirty. So those are, I guess, the gist of my comments, I think. I think that it's hard to say no, but I think that you should have the courage to do so in this case. And I don't know how to get rid of this.
Uh, I can just stop sharing, or Yicheng, if you would start sharing.
Sure.
Or actually, so. I've lost track of who's made comments, I think. Sally, did you, or Carrie?
Uh, so. I appreciate sort of, you know, all sides of this discussion, I really appreciate the work that has gone into creating. You know, housing that's affordable and that's flexible and that's ADA compliant, I think that's definitely. A need in the town, and I think that is, you know, an underserved population and making the stores more accessible is a great, is a great. Service and and one that, you know, we need to keep sort of pushing to expand in town. I I don't, I I agree with, you know, Nick's sort of review of the inventory of buildings that we have, you know, it's, we can't sort of. You know, unfortunately, we don't get to sort of decide based on sort of like our fondness for owners and things like that, like in terms of the the look and the feel of downtown, which, you know, we're all. We're all attached to a certain openness and a certain sort of visual aesthetic downtown, and these buildings are are the anchor of the rotary. And pointing out that eventually they may all be three stories, or they may all, you know, that's partly what we saw with, you know, the ten converse height went back and forth, and eventually it could be a taller downtown. But I don't know if sort of putting that. You know, sort of throwing that gauntlet in this particular building is a smart thing to do right now, with that's kind of a lot that's going to be, you know. Coming to the downtown and a lot of opportunities like Nick pointed out for for buildings that are better, if not, you know, owners with better intentions.
And I was, I was actually making a distinction between historic and nonhistoric, but I, but I do take your point.
Clearly, but.
Yeah. It's a good.
It's historic, I think. You know, the building is historic, but the the position and the sort of viewshed that it creates around the rotary is is sort of crucial to that feeling that we have downtown.
That's a good point, I hadn't thought of that.
Let's see, Yicheng, I forget, did you already have your comments?
No, I I think I just had my questions.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I I do, I am a little concerned that with. His, these various committees sort of not being. Talking, you know, within each other's realms, so with with Historical Commission. Focused on our protecting our historical resources and having such a favorable. Look upon this, I find it very. Uncomfortable to to keep talking about historical issues here. In a way that denies their their, you know, process and how they've gone through it. And from what I've heard, it's, the proponent has worked very closely with them in order to come up with this, to get their favorable. You know, position, and so when we keep talking about historical. Reasons for denying this, it just, it just seems like it is something that goes against how the process is supposed to work. And, you know, with their intentionality, the proponents intentionality going through this with the disability access. Housing Partnership and Historical Commission and Design Review. Um, you know, of of those four, the one that, you know, is standing out the most is design. And I I note their blank wall situation as well as their setbacks, and I think for the reasons that the proponents. Said, I I also think that, you know, that the. You know, extrusion is it is a better solution for this than a setback. Um, and it's alignment with the original building is a better solution than something that completely differentiates it. Because I don't think that Winchester is ready for that kind of a thing, that is a Woburn Public Library situation. And, you know, on this building that is, as Mr. McConnell pointed out, isn't. Incredibly precious like a Woburn Public Library. So, um, for housing and. Um, it's building of it, I think that that solution is correct. And for, as a pedestrian walking through it, the protection of, you know, that that look and feel, you know, the surface of the ground and the and the feel of the. Um, tightness of the streetscape all remains and is actually. Um, benefited from this project because of the increase in accessibility here. Um, so I, I, you know. I think that if we use the historical argument against this. When the Historical Commission is so in favor of it, it would would be very harmful to to the process. Um, so for that reason, I, you know, I would urge. Um, folks here to to, you know. We consider that position, if it is based on his historical protection.
Thank you, Yicheng, Sally.
Thank you, Diab, um, so. I too am perplexed by the Historical Commission. Um, not saying. That they do not want changes made to historic buildings. And I don't know why they said that from their perch, their perspective. Um, but I do agree with Yicheng that good work has been done between. Mr. Levitt and the Design Review, I'm not, excuse me, the Disability Access Board. And between Mr. Levitt and the Housing Partnership Board. Um, or maybe you didn't work with them, but but they have supported your work. Um, for or the proposal to put a third floor on there for the reason that it does provide an additional. Four lowercase a affordable units of rental housing in our town. Um, and. It it doesn't particularly help us with one of those state metrics, and later, if John Serbeer needs to correct me, he can. But it's increasing the denominator, but not the numerator of the question of our subsidized housing inventory. Fine, 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 that's the state rules, the fact is that these would be very small. Um, not particularly well-designed interior apartments, but they'd be small and relative to the area inexpensive, and that's a benefit to the town. Um, so then I say, well, so how does it look to put this third floor on there? And I'm kind of perplexed by the National Register standards that it actually has to look different. Um, and I think, I I can't picture the Woburn Public Library, I drive by it all the time, but I can picture the Boston Public Library. And the modern addition on the BPL is a modern interpretation of a historical structure. And so to that extent, I can understand why the National Register would say, don't try to make it look like it's always been that way. Try to do a contemporary thing that honors what's there in vocabulary or form. So, but in this particular building, I kind of agree, I've looked up what does colonial revival mean? And, um, the book that I use, I hope I have it within arms' reach, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't want to leave. No, but so the, there's, there's a great book, Nick, you have a copy of it too, that talks about all the different forms.
Oh, yeah, McAllister.
Thank you.
American house styles.
Right, and so the colonial revival form is. Um, a a loose egg, a a collection of styles that pull in references to other. Colonial architectural vocabulary. So the cornice, the bay windows, going back to the the photograph of the existing building, right? Um, uh, that is all colonial revive, or, yeah, colonial revival architecture in its form. I don't think the storefronts themselves do that much help, but the building as it stands behind that. Um, that's how it describes itself as colonial revival, that's how that architecture is to express colonial revival. That said, I don't like the proposal for the third floor that's up there, I just think it looks. Really stuck on like a square pancake, and I just, I don't think it looks good. And a couple of friends of mine who I have talked to, who are architects, have said that one way to get around this. Considering that it is, it is, it is a contributing asset to our National. Register of Historic Places, it's one of, looking at Wendy's memo, twenty seven, I think. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have it, it's too many papers. Yes, it's, it's, it's one of twenty seven buildings that contribute to the town. And I absolutely agree with Nick that the the master plan is a guiding document for all of us. And it says that balancing historic preservation and development is the very first thing that it talks about. Um, so in that regard, we shouldn't compromise the historic feel of our National Register of Historic Places Center. Winchester Center with its twenty seven valuable buildings. Again, that said, I wonder if it's not possible to add a third story that doesn't look. Like such a boxy thing. And I found in the minutes back in twenty twenty that Eileen Cascary from the Design Review Committee. Asked Mr. McConnell if a mansard roof would work on this building. Um, and you said that it would not work, that it would be a complete. Um, redirection of the architectural style of this building. And I think I also heard you say that it's not a particularly precious building. Um, and then my question becomes, does it impact? It would certainly remove it from the register of National Register of Historic Places by virtue of such a radical modification. But the question would then be, would it still allow the center of Winchester to retain its historic charm? And I have not seen from this development team. Um, a solution that would be a mansard roof that respectfully and and. Um, uh, intelligently integrates the cornice. Um, into a mansard, so that you would achieve some sense of the of the sloping roof, you would. I mean, a mansard is is kind of a sloping roof, it's a kind of a setback. Um, and so unless the developer, of the owner, I'm sorry, you're not a developer, you're an owner, Mr. Levitt, I apologize for calling you a developer. Um, unless the owner and his architect think that that is something that could be explored. I would say that it shouldn't be expanded upward the way it's currently designed, because I just don't think that it. Looks good, it looks boxy and stuck on, and I don't. Think that does anything for the town. Um, so, wait, I had a cheat sheet, hold on. I absolutely think that there are, and I think Nick's slideshow did a good job of that. Showing that there's plenty of other buildings in the Center Business District that would benefit from being redeveloped as a second or. Two or three story building for additional housing for the center. And so I think that there's lots of opportunities, as Nick said. To add housing to the center and to do it in a way that honors our our design guidelines. Um, and honors the opportunity to express. Um, sort of the historical experience of the village on buildings that aren't historic. So all that said, um, and because I don't think very much of the interior architecture, even though it's not in my purview, it's not in the purview of this board, or as far as I know. It's not in the purview of this board, or as far as I know, any board in town. Um, I I'm still not in favor of what they've proposed, but I'm not entirely opposed. To some other third-story solution, but if that's not what the planning board is talking about right now, if we're talking about the. Drawing that was in Mr. Levitt's or the rendering, excuse me, that was in Mr. Levitt's presentation. I would say that I don't favor that design. Um, I do favor more small, affordable housing in our town center. It's called transit-oriented development and it's desperately needed. Um, and um, the question of parking is addressed as far as capacity allows by buying permits. In um town lots um for people who are residents of the town center. Um, so, uh. Um, let me just see if there's any other things that I was um wanting to say about that. Um. So I I guess that's it, that right now I'm not leaning favorably, even though I know that we need downtown housing. Um, and I'm I'm confused about the historical commission decision. And I'm wondering if, since the definition of colonial revival is such a um. Of uh not fluid, but it's a, it's a broadly defined category of styles. Whether mansard would violate that, or if it does violate it, it's a complete change in direction. Um, whether that would be something that the Design Review Committee would consider reviewing. And the Historical Commission would consider approving, but that's the only way that I could see a third floor. That's my comment.
Can I comment on what Sally had to say, please? Hello?
Yeah, if you're muted.
Yeah, no, I think at this point, Mr. Levitt, we're just going around the board.
Okay.
So um, because we're. So I think that one of one of the issues here is this is the first historic building that is being looked at downtown in terms of redevelopment. So I think there's a lot of attention being put on this building. But I want to point out that, um. So let me go through what I think are the benefits of the town. I think the addition of these um moderately priced rental units is very important. The fact that they're located very close to uh public transit is extremely important. Um, it's a small number, but you know, it's an extra few people who are going to go into local shops. Um, and uh the fact that there will be, uh, it's promising a completely ADA compliant unit with an elevator that goes up to the third floor. And a number of other um. Important um additions that are not completely ADA compliant, but make these units more accessible. I think that's 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 really important. Um, so. Then that's that's the easy part. The hard part is we have this historic building and nobody wants to touch it because it's the first one. So, um, I agree with with the proponents that this is not a particularly extraordinary example of historical architecture. It's a nice little building. Um. And I think that. If you look at any of the other buildings which could be built up by rights. We're going to run into some of the exact same issues that people are finding with this building. So for instance, if this building is not allowed to go to three stories, but the Lyceum Building is. We're going to have this massive blank wall. Which is what you see in the historical pictures. Okay, so that's a blank wall. If people, you know, so we could go downtown and look at all the buildings which previously had three floors. So for instance, the um the drugstore had three floors or a couple of others. And when they get built up, we're going to see the exact same responses. People are not going to like them because they block views. They change the scale of downtown. So I think there's a inherent. Problem with saying, well, we don't want this one to go forward. But then what happens with the next one? Do we also not want the next one? I mean, there's a. At some point, we're going to have to say, yes, it's okay to go in. I mean, we 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 want this town center to develop. And we're going to have to say, yeah, um, a historical building is going to get developed. Some of them will be developed because they have the, you know, they were burnt down, the first two floors were burnt down. But they're going to go up and they're going to change this the scape, the viewscape of downtown, whether we like it or not. So I I think there's a, there's, there's an inevitability here that people, I think. Don't want to see, and I can understand that. People like seeing this town the way it is. The other thing I'm a little concerned about is pointing out, and I know it's true, there are a lot of other buildings which I think would. Take development much better than this one. But that's not the project in front of us, and we don't know if those projects will ever come in front of us. So I I I find it hard to make a decision based upon what might happen in the future. Because I don't know if the person, I mean, the people who, for instance. Own any of those stores in Nick's slides, and there are quite a few of them, they could have been building on top of those for years, and they've chosen not to. I don't know why. But that those, the possibility for developing those buildings has been there for a long time. And they've never come before this board and said, hey, we want to put something there. So waiting and saying that this project isn't the first one that we should do, we should wait for another first project. I don't know if we'll ever see another first project. I think that we have to look at the what's in front of us. And so. Um, you know. I am in favor of this project because I think that the benefits. That it gives the town. Outweigh. What, you know, I don't know if how you can make the third floor look handsome on any of these buildings. I've seen some attempts in downtown Boston where they've taken these old historic buildings and they put on things in order to. Separate the new from the old, and they're horrendous. I really think they've done poorly. And I think that the. Specific design that's on that was presented for this building certainly does not, to my mind, read like it's part of the original. I think that, I don't know the 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 proper terms, but let's call it the cornice on top of this one. Certainly separates it from the addition of the third story. And I kind of agree with Sally that I I think it looks awkward on top of there. I don't know how, I'm not an architect. I don't know what you would do to make it look better. Um, I do think it could be made to look better. I I don't know if a mansard is the route I would go. Um, but I think that that's an issue in terms of. The design, I don't see that as the as the obstacle in my mind to moving forward. Um, we need the housing. At some point downtown is going to change. We've got a lot of places that could have seen development, but just haven't, and I just don't think waiting until those people decide one day they want to develop their properties. We could be waiting for a very long time, so. Those are my comments, and um I think at this point, um, I think it's up to the board if they want to move to to decision process. I think we've heard from all the parties.
Yeah, we probably should take it to the next step since it's eight thirty-three.
Yeah, so I think the board has, in my mind, I I have all the information I need to make a decision. And if the rest of the board feels that way, then I would recommend that we move forward with the vote.
Yeah, I think I think we should.
I would make a motion, and I I do want to recognize the design review has worked really hard on it and taken a really good look at it. And the the couple of things that they um noted in interiors, we can't do anything about. Um, the um blank wall. And I I would make a, you know, motion to approve based on perhaps more. Um. Kind of decorative elements to the blank wall than necessary, but I don't think that removes it, the the needle. And I, you know, would recommend maybe a different. Materiality to the top, but you know, historical commission was the one who wanted the brick. So, you know, I, one thing that I would note perhaps is this door. Um, and I saw a sort of a copy and paste of this on here. And I feel like that actually is sort something what the consultant had said it is. Doesn't differentiate it as its own thing. Um, this does seem, this part does seem like its own thing to me and not part of this building, so the copy and paste kind of bugs me a little bit. But I I never had this discussion with you guys, so I don't. Um, I don't know if that's a proper thing to add on to. Um. So maybe I will make a motion to approve. Um, with, I don't think anybody cares about this, but me, but this this door redesigned to not be a copy and paste of this door. Is that strong enough motion for anybody to second it?
Can I, can I make a comment on that, please?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Uh, we're actually in the middle of of our vote, so um why don't we? Why don't we see if we get a second and then we can open for discussion and then maybe. Unless you want to ask the question before you make your motion, Eicheng? I don't want to interrupt the motion.
Sure. Is there a reason why there was a copy and pasted and not not made so that this this whole structure is separate from this? This particular, and if you guys don't remember the rendering, it was, it was basically a copy and then paste.
That's an entryway for the handicap accessibility for the retail stores and also for the elevator. That is going to be. That door is going to be. Duplicated the same as the door as you see at Two inches a place.
Right, and my point is that this whole forum was its original building and to keep it historical. And make this the same as that would then confuse somebody who is looking at it to to assume that some, you know. That this somehow was part of this, but it isn't, and and it wasn't historic.
That was put on in the fifties sometime.
Right, so 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 the motion would be that you don't, you don't want, you would prefer to have a different style than on the original building.
Correct. Kind of what the consultant was saying and differentiated.
Um, so so your motion is to approve. Um, with some sort of um. Design on the blank wall, if we want to call it that, and then to change to ensure that the. Entrance to the elevator has a different design aesthetic than on the original building.
Yes.
Okay, so that is the motion before the board. Is there a second? And I'm guessing from the quiet that there is not a second. And since I can't make a motion, I guess the motion fails is or the motion is not, does not go forward.
Yeah, I guess I can make a motion uh uh not to approve.
Okay. And can you, let's see, so. Let me write that down, Nick. Motion for, um, what is the word we're looking for?
Denial?
Denial, I guess. So the question is, let's go back to. There are three stages of denial. Now, there are three um ways of writing the motion. And I apologize, I should have brought this up first. Let me pull this out. Um. So. You can approve the project with or without conditions. You can deny the project with or without prejudice.
Okay.
So. With prejudice means. A withdrawal or a denial with prejudice assumes the same or very similar project would be denied and a significantly different project should be pursued by an applicant. A withdrawal or denial with, that's with prejudice, I'm sorry. Without prejudice assumes that the same or very similar project could be applied for and potentially approved with or without of conditions.
Okay, so I I guess I'll. Um, move for denial with prejudice.
Okay, so if you move, if this goes through, then the board would have to review. Well, in either case, if this, if the proponent comes back, the board would have to review it to determine whether or not it was substantially similar. Okay, so we have a motion for denial with prejudice? Is there a second?
Hey, can I clarify? If we were to prefer to deny without prejudice, we're voting no to this motion?
Right, you would, you're right. So for instance.
And significantly different, so if it was. The it, I I feel like I don't know the parameters on that, so I'm not sure.
I think the problem is the the biggest part of this is a third story.
Okay, so if another third story came before us, how would we?
That you, that would be essentially similar. If it's a design standard. I think if you denied with prejudice, then I don't think a third story could come back. If you denied without prejudice, then a third story come come back with a different design for the third story. That's the way I would read that. Um, of course, we don't have our town center here, so, but that's, that's, it's a question of what counts as a significant change in design. And I would say that um if the board is mostly concerned about whether there should be three stories on this site. Then denying with prejudice would be the way to go. If the board is concerned with. What sort of design there is to the third story, then if you don't like the current design, then it would be a design without prejudice. I hope I didn't confuse things. So the motion on the floor is denial with prejudice. Which I think would essentially mean that attempting to come back with a third story would be. Um. Not, um.
Like in perpetuity?
Well, you know, see, I'm looking at.
Yeah, these are good questions.
That that's a very good question, and I'm basing this on what's in our. Um, our, our, um. Procedure, I will now go to the. Um. Code of bylaws. Um, if this is an important enough concern to the board, then one option would be to continue this until we get legal counsel's advice. And make sure that we understand because we, I don't mean to use this word incorrectly, we do not wish to prejudice our decision based on.
Or we could, uh, we could move to 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 deny without prejudice.
And apparently I can't spell prejudice.
So Nick, is that a revision of your motion?
Um, might be a discussion.
Well, because I I do have a discussion point on that question. Um, not that question, but on that suggestion. And to me, the question is, if you deny with prejudice. Um, as Diab said, we would say, this is a historic building. We don't want to entertain any more discussion of adding a floor to this historic building. And that would be a denial with prejudice. Um, and it would um. Conform to the concerns of the Design Review Committee. Um, but but it would not conform to the concerns. Um, or the decision of the Historical Commission or the concerns of the Housing Partnership Board. Um, and a denial without prejudice would mean that the board would be willing to look at other. Third-floor designs um that could possibly address the concerns of the Design Review Committee. Um, or maybe not them unless they saw something they liked in the third, in the new design. Um, but it would be, would allow. Um, us to ask the the builder, the owner to come back with a different design. Um, that could potentially address the um. The needs of our Housing Partnership Board and the Community for Housing and um the Historical Commission. Um, would presumably be favorable for that, too. So, uh, it, having said all that, I I'm more inclined to denial with prejudice. Um, excuse me, without prejudice. Um, the question would be whether a mansard third-floor roof is the same thing as what they showed us and therefore. We don't want to see any more third floors. We just, we're done.
So I think.
A mansion, I think, would be, would be a redirection. I mean, it would, it's a completely different style.
So so if I said, if I said, um, deny with without prejudice, it would allow. The applicant to present a different style. Is that right? Or is that what everybody understands?
I think the problem here is that we don't have a complete understanding of this term. I think the problem here is that we don't have a complete understanding of this term. And so rather than, I, I would suggest to the board that we continue this hearing until we get.
Okay.
Counsel to give us some guidance, and I did not. I should have thought of asking counsel to be here this evening, but he isn't, but I didn't. So, my recommendation to the board would be that we, we continue the hearing until time certain that.
What if we, we have a motion to deny without prejudice?
But I don't know if we know what that means exactly. I think, Nick, you raised the question. If it's a change of style, is that a, is that a completely new project?
Right.
And so if you believe that a change of style is a completely new project, and I believe it's not, then we have a problem because we don't agree on the definition.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what, what, what do we need to do? I mean, what's the next continuation gonna look like? Is it gonna be protracted? Or are we gonna be able to wrap it up?
I think we, we, I think, I think the board has all the information it needs. I think we've all agreed that because we've come to a vote this evening. I think the only question we have is. What the words with and without prejudice mean in terms. So I think it would be a very fast vote because. I don't think any of us have to make our arguments anymore. We just have to understand the legalities of what our vote means.
So the date that we would be continuing it to, Diab, would be um. Uh, the um, I just have to look at this. Um, May sixteenth or no, May twenty third.
Twenty third.
Yeah, so we haven't asked the board, Sally, you snuck, you keep sneaking that sixteenth in without asking the board.
I can't, I can't, well.
I know, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be sneaky.
I didn't mean that in a, in a.
No, I know, I know.
Um, so. Why don't we give it two weeks? Um, so why don't we say at um seven thirty? On maybe the twenty third. And there will be a short meeting where we come back and everyone will understand what the terms mean. And then we will have the vote.
And the, and on the twenty third, we would be voting to deny with or without prejudice, and once we have clarification from town council about what.
I'm not saying we're gonna be voting to deny or not deny because.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that, we would just have clarification in that meeting about what.
What the terms mean, and what I think I'll do is if, if, if town council can show up and make sure that everyone's understanding because. Um, I have a feeling that if I ask a question, I might not ask the same question that Nick or you or Carrie or Eching will ask, so. I will try to make sure that we have town council with us.
Okay.
And I will write down his name rather than someone else's. Um, so why, why don't we continue until? The, what did we say it was? The twenty third at seven?
Twenty third at seven thirty.
And I will ask for town council to be there. And um, so just, just to be clear, um, the proponent. You know, the complete thing here is that the board can vote or the proponent can withdraw. And we can accept the withdrawal with or without prejudice the same way. But again, the concept of what, the, the meaning of that word prejudice in regards to these design decisions is something that. Um, we need to find out. So I will speak with town council. Um, Mr. Levitt, I will get you um my understanding from town council, what those terms mean, so that you will have enough information to make your decision. And also, um, I'll ask town council to be at our next meeting so that the board can ask those questions as well. And. I think that's.
Could I say something in reference to historical?
I, I think, I, I, I know you really want to, but I think the board is, I think the board is.
I've been listening to the board for an hour. I, I think I should have at least an entitlement. Should you abolish the historical commission? Is that what this board is saying?
The board is not saying that.
Yeah, they are.
Mr. Levitt, you did, you did have a chance to speak earlier, so it's not like you haven't had a chance, and I don't mean that in a bad sense. But I, I, the problem right now, Mr. Levitt, is I think the board. I think the members of the board have pretty much made up their mind at this point.
Yeah, I'm seeing that.
And so I don't, I, 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 I understand the.
You're seeing it in my voice too.
Yeah, and I, I think that at this point.
I, I feel sorry.
To figure out what the. How the board can come to a legally correct decision with the right language. And so that I want to make sure that you also understand. Your rights. Oh, I'm sorry, you have been muted. So.
I said I understand very clearly.
Okay, um, so let's, we've got, can I have a motion to um continue this hearing until May twenty third at seven thirty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, roll call vote, please. Uh, Sally?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Uh, each in?
Aye.
And Diab's eye as well. So we are, um, we will see you again, Mr. Levitt, hopefully in two weeks at seven thirty. Um, and now.
He's on mute, put him back.
No, I think we, we need to move on, I think. Mr. Levitt, are you, did you wanna? I think we have to move on because we're ten minutes over.
Twenty minutes over. I will see you. Thank you very much.
Um, so let us, right now, we are talking about town day, I believe.
Yes.
And we have, we have two special permits coming up at nine, and one of them's a big one, so I don't think we can. Go over.
No, I can be very quick about town day. Um. What I realized when I was trying to understand. The materials that Form and Place had given us for the test fits for North Main Street, including. The overlap of North Main with the three A um, one half mile um, is that um. Uh, there's a lot of things going on in the planning board. That would be really interesting to share with our co-residents, with our fellow residents at our town day booth. And it's really important that we think very carefully about presenting things that we as a group have decided we agree with. Um, and not present things that a consultant has put out there as an option that we've never discussed, right? So. Um, I don't know what we should show in our town day booth, but I think that we should um. Agree that the purpose of us purchasing a booth at town day is to. Explain to our fellow community members. What we do and what we're faced with and what we take into consideration and why a planning board. Um, is what it's looking at, and we're looking at land use, and we're looking at long range impacts, and what can we? Do in our town day booth to tell that story. And. So, that said, I just think that I want to get ready to present to, to the board something that is a graphical tool for our meeting on the twenty. Whatever it is, Diab.
Um, well.
When I'm not sneaking in.
The, the one that you're not sneaking is on the twenty third.
Okay.
So, the twenty third is only six, is, is ten days from town day.
Right, um, so that was my question about um, if I could possibly get in front of the board sooner.
I think the um.
I. Can I just, I, I, can I just say that I think that I would, I would um be comfortable. With Sally's judgment in that she's very diligent and responsible in terms of what. I, I, I mean.
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't have the discussion that the board will have, looking at all the options for.
Right, but, 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 I mean, some of those pictures are just um. Their, their ideas, their, they are what it could look like. It doesn't necessarily mean that we voted on that or, or that we even have the opportunity. To create it, uh, but anything that was presented to us, I think would be helpful as a visual. For people to see what are some of the possibilities, and in that regard. We probably would be able to look at it on the twenty third and, and.
Okay.
And be able to say this looks, you know, it, 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 I, I, I think it would be.
Let me, let me put my special carpet design as my background and then you can.
So, so let me, I'm gonna.
Because I only have six minutes left.
Yes, um, so in terms of what we present at town day, let's. Let's be very careful in that we know that a lot of people on. They under.
Diab, you froze. Or I maybe a.
On cross. Whereas um, they thought that it was our, our plans and that we had agreed to it. And I don't think that so.
You know, we haven't agreed to it, that's what's.
Right, that's a good point.
That most people do, you know, as much as we think we're famous, most people don't know who we are or what we talk about. And so I think that if we were to present streetscapes. So, you know, the planting of trees, things like that, I, you know, the redesigning of some of the intersections, I think that gives a flavor of what we want the streetscape to look like. And while that is completely about our purview, because that's, we can't zone for streetscape or at least planting of trees. I think that gives a flavor, but if we were to present any of the fits from Form and Place. As Sally pointed out earlier, they're just too complicated, there are too many of them. It's. We can't, we don't want to confuse people and show them something which we would never.
Right, I, I agree, I agree with you, Diab.
Yeah.
Well, I still, I still know that we need to have it on our planning board agenda, and I'm trying to put together something to make possible for us to do that.
Yes.
So to that extent, I'm gonna keep working on this.
Yes, but let's focus on town day. So on town day, I think we have, we certainly want to have something about North Main Street, and I think the street views would be great.
Okay.
Um, then the question is, what else? There's a long list that Sally, you put together.
I did an email the other, the other day, and, and we talked about, let me just find my email. I said, um, oh, I know one thing for sure, Rich Roman, who's still visiting family in California. Is very eager to use town, our town day booth to promote um the master plan implementation committee. And one thought that I had shared in that email was to um identify some of the strategies that are in the master plan. That are already underway um and celebrate that, celebrate the work that's happening in twenty twenty-three, based on the twenty twenty master plan. Um, and recruit people to help move this forward. So that's one thing.
Right, but do you have, do you have people lined up to do that? That's a great idea, but is someone signed up to do that, other than yourself?
Uh, well, Rich and, and, and uh, I believe it was um, Nick. We're gonna work on coming up with images that would um show both, not, not only the streetscape. So, uh, complete street proposals for the revitalization of the design of North Main Street. But also, um, I didn't know if Nick was gonna also help Rich come up with the list of, of the top. I don't know, top X.
I, I, I know, I, I was actually gonna, I mean, the, the, the designs that you're talking about, the streetscape were ahead of mind.
Okay, so, but Rich is definitely interested in that, and he's got an MPIC meeting called for right when he gets back from California. And then the only other one was if we would try to explain about three A in our booth. And if we would try to explain what, what, what's under consideration, but no decisions have been made about Holton Swanton Cross. And then um, updates and handouts on ADUs because that's a done thing and everyone's happy. Um, and other than that, that's what it is right now. Civic code's not in our court yet.
I'm just a little worried that we have so few weeks to go, and I don't know what the um. If I, if I were to see a checklist with things checked off as to, yeah, we got this covered, we got this, I know, I know.
Sent out an assignment email, but there was, it was crickets. So, well, I don't know what to say, Diab.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to say is.
Okay, plus nine, it's eight fifty-eight, so we can.
So I think, I think we need to, we need to, if we're gonna make this thing work, then I think we need to have. Some buy-in from the board. So I will, I will work on the NBA T, MBTA three A thing. Um, so that's, I will, I will come up with some um. Text and some graphics for that. I think that's about all I'll be able to handle.
And I'll be able to come up with a graphic illustration of the test fits to walk the planning board through. But I would like um to be able to speak to Michael and John about exactly what they need the planning board to do. To help them move to the next step.
So, and that's, that's just for us, that's not for town day.
That's right, it's not for town day, that's correct. And then for town day, I mean, we have ADUs.
We have eighty years, we've got M, MPEC, we've got three A. And I think we do have to have maybe, maybe a flyer about North Main Street and Holton Street, not with any. Specifics about all the different fits that we got from the consultants, but the overall gist of what we're trying to do.
Okay, okay.
So, and I, I, let's talk about this when we get back to scheduling after we do our.
And now it's nine o'clock, so good.
Now it's nine o'clock, thank you. So um, so we have two um. Two petitions before us, um, one is. So seventeen Central Street, um. And this is, uh, I'm just gonna read it off petition, this, this is petition number three nine nine six seventeen Central Street. Just nor seeking a dimensional variance. Uh, from section four four two subsection four of the Winchester zoning by law. Um, so let's be permitted to locate a portable spa with self-contained equipment closer than ten feet from the building. Properties and RDB contains twelve hundred, two hundred and thirty-nine square feet. Is there someone from the proponent who's with us this evening? Uh, you won't be able to um unmute yourself, but if you. Put up your hand, we'll know you're here.
You, Diab, this is a gentleman named Peter with no last name who has his hand raised.
Oh, okay, I can't see this person's hand.
Okay, I think it's Peter White, and I'm gonna unmute your um. Your Peter White.
Will you put your last name in?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You're in there twice.
Okay, I'm gonna do the Peter White with no image. You see that, Peter?
I don't know.
Yes, how's that?
That's good. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, great.
Great.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so let us, um, so the. Hold on a sec. So what we're looking at here, and if you could zoom in. I think the key thing here is that you are, this is the existing condition.
Yeah.
And then the next, is it the next one?
Yep.
So, the key thing is that you're trying to put in a spa and you don't want to take out the tree.
That's right.
So, what, well, okay, I'll just wait.
No, that's, that's, uh, we can, I think this is hopefully a pretty quick one.
So what I did look up um in the state Commonwealth C M R, whatever that stands for, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulations, that. A portable spa is not a pool. And specifically, it says something about the controls have to be completely self-contained, are an integral part of the product. Okay, so, so Winchester has rules about pools um that they can't be um. Uh, in the setbacks, okay, but it doesn't say that it can't be. Close to the house, but then Winchester says in its next line of its code. No portion of that, oh, no portion of the water shall be within ten feet of any building. Um, that's, that's in four point four point two, paragraph four. Paragraph three talks about if you were trying to do a pool and you didn't want to do it in the setback. Um, or if you wanted to do a pool in the setback, you, you might get a special permit, but only if it wasn't within ten feet of the building. Um, and my husband has been doing some design work for people who want pools, and. What he understands about the ten foot thing is that it has happened that kids have tried to jump out of windows into pools. Um, in second floor windows.
Okay, but this is.
That's, that's just some rationale or whatever. I don't know what I think about that, but this is not a pool. So then the question is, it's a portable spa with self-contained controls, and does four point four point two. Paragraph four cover portable spas?
So I'm gonna assume that building department has come to the conclusion it does. Because that's what's before us.
Why do you assume that?
Because they're the ones who have made the decision that this has to go this route.
I see. Okay, so the building department has said that. No portion of the water shall be within ten feet.
I think they just.
Includes a portable spa.
Mr. White, would you, can you tell us?
Yeah, that's not, that's not my interpretation of the building inspector's approach, it's that, or his position, it was that. He's not sure whether a spa is considered a pool and needs to be in or out of the ten foot setback. The reason we're here is we're not, we're not um. Uh, objecting to the ten-foot setback yet. We think it's more important to save the tree than to meet a ten-foot setback, which has folklore about kids jumping off roofs or out of windows. Um, so I, I, I'm not sure that anybody in town knows the reason for the ten-foot. Some people say it's they don't want water pressure on a foundation if a pool leaks. So they want to stay back, a basement foundation is, the pool is back far enough so water doesn't seep in. Put pressure on a foundation. Some people say jumping out of the windows. But whatever the ten-foot, um, the reason the ten-foot setback is there is it's in this area that the spa can go, um, without a variance, except for this ten-foot dimensional setback.
Can, can, can it go anywhere else within the setback? Um, um, for instance, I don't have a north arrow here, but I'm just gonna say to the lower end of this site on this view.
So on the drawing in the screen, there is a space that it could drop down the page. And to the corner, up, up where the red corner, ninety-degree corners by the red lines, yeah. About, about there. Yep. There's a driveway right there and the fence is there. But this is the dining terrace. And there, the cook state, cook grill is going there. And the client, the windows can't look at the spa from inside the house there. So the reason the client wants, the owner wants it in the location it's proposed is they can see outside from these windows right at the hot tub, and they want to be seeing it. They want to see who's in it and, and be able to see it.
Right.
And, um, we are not trying to get a variance or special permit to be within the building setback. So the building setback is the most restrictive one. We can't, we can't put it in the presumed backyard or side yard anywhere.
Yeah, the lot, you mean the lot setback. You're not trying to put it in the lot setback.
Yeah, the building lot setback.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's right.
The wonders of owning a corner lot.
So when you do the overlay of ten-foot setbacks off all the buildings, garage and house. There leaves a space in, uh, the corner where it's, uh, would be in the center of the dining terrace. And visible from the lounge terrace, not visible from the house. So that's why we're asking for relief on the ten-foot dimensional setback. The, our, our thinking is that it imposes no burden on the neighborhood, no, uh, um, that it's all about the owner's house. There's no place for the kids to jump. They're not, the, the hot tub is stainless steel. There's no chance for it to leak, and it's a hot tub, so there's very little water. So, um. That's, if we moved it out towards the tree, there is two-thirds of it could be in, uh, out of the building setback, but it would then get into the lot setback.
Um, oh, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you, um, what is, what is it about this particular problem that would trigger the variance?
No, it's a special permit. If they go into the setback, it's a variance if they try to do it within ten feet of the house.
Within ten feet of that. No, but so this is a dimensional.
Yeah, so that is a variance. You're right, E Ching.
So you're asking for a variance, Peter?
From the ten-foot dimensional setback on the house.
This is a variance. So.
Where's the cover sheet?
It's our first variance since town meeting.
It's a dimensional variance. That's what it says right there.
Dimensional variance.
So it's not a use.
Yeah, it's not a use, and it's not a, it's not a special permit. So I, 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 I think the, the thing, uh, the question before us is, in my mind, is this reasonable? I, I don't see a problem with this. I think it's, it's, it's you don't want to take, uh, the, the question is, if you, if you don't, if you, if they're desperately want the hot tub. They can either take out the tree and put in the hot tub, or move the tub over and keep the tree.
Yeah, pictures of the tree. It's a, it's a fantastic tree.
Yeah, it's down below in the set.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, in my mind, the hot tub is something which can be put in or removed, but the tree is something which needs to stay.
Right.
So.
I've seen hot tubs like attached to the house. How is that possible?
Is that in Winchester?
On, yeah, on the porch.
There's plenty of hot tubs that nobody came to the building department and it's for a permit. They got them delivered and plugged it in. We have, happened to go to town to the building department and get a permit.
Um, one more question, Peter. Uh, what, what about the materiality of the fence?
The fence is gonna match the, if you go back to the photos, is gonna match the existing fence that's there. The, oh, you can't. So we're gonna have a pool, not a pool enclosure fence, because we're not required to, but we're gonna have a fence. Which is required by the Z, uh, Winchester bylaws. And, um, plus the hot tub has a safety cover that meets, uh, state and international building code for relief from pool enclosures on pools and spas. But the local bylaw requires a fence around it. So we're extending the fence. We're replacing the whole fence because it's rotten, but we're keeping the color. The current fence is seven feet. We're lowering, lowering it to six feet all along this property line here. And we're just gonna enclose this section of the hot tub.
As well as on this side too, seems like.
Yeah, so because of the, so we're replacing the rotted fence on the, uh, up at that corner where the cursor was.
Up here.
Yeah, right there. Yep, that, that fence is rotten, so we're replacing that with a new fence. There's a fence all the way down the sideline. And then in the back, we have a, we have to enclose a fence behind the garage too, to, to close off the space, the fence in the space.
So D F, your, your comment was, um, regardless of the, the ten-foot thing, um. You, you don't see a problem with this if it means that it saves a magnificent tree.
I think it's a really minor issue. I mean, it's not a minor issue, but I don't see how this particular. I don't, I don't see that this impacts. Yeah, I don't, I, I just don't see a problem with.
I, I think I'm leaning in the same direction, D F. I just don't s- see. Um, why this would not be able to receive a variance? One of the, um, things involved in a variance is that, is there's a hardship um, element to it, and I would consider removing a magnificent tree, um, a hardship.
Yeah, I mean, that's, to be honest, that's, that's the, the key thing in my mind is the question is, would they be able to, it, I do not know what's in the homeowner's mind, whether they're, say, we, we want a hot tub regardless. And we're gonna take this tree down if we don't get our hot tub where we want it. I don't know what's up, what's in their mind. But in my mind, it's just, this is, you know. On, on the other hand, it's a luxury item. It's not like you can't live without a hot tub. Um, but in terms of not knowing whether the homeowner will say this is a make or break for the tree, I don't know the homeowner, so.
Right.
It's.
So we.
We, we, well, well, in our discussions about where can you put the hot tub? We showed them where it's narrowed down to and that they're taking out the tree. We could, you know, it could be there, but why lose the tree? So they value the tree as much as the hot tub. Yeah. The hot tub can go with them if they sell, which I suspect it would. It's a stainless steel self-contained system. It's a plug and play um, element, so.
Yeah, I, so I would, you know, if the board wants to make a motion, one way or the other, I think, I, we haven't heard from the other three members of the board.
Yeah, I would like to hear from.
And can we ask, who the heck is Triton Basketball? Who let Triton Basketball in?
I did, um, but I don't know if it's, um, Asira.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let's, let's.
Think I'm married.
We don't have the ability to talk to people anymore. We used to be able to ask them, but, um.
I think a host can send a specific message to a specific person.
Nope.
Okay, nevermind.
Anymore. I've tried that this evening as a matter of fact.
So did you, um, just ask for a motion?
I did ask for a motion.
Oh, but no, first we want to hear from Carrie and Nick.
Yes, but.
I mean, the only concern I'm hearing is that kids are gonna have the opportunity to do something dumb, and if there's a zoning that can prevent that, I'm dying to hear it. Someone may go out a window into the hot tub, and I think if that's the big risk, obviously I'm in favor of keeping the tree, so I don't see any big concerns here.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think, I think that, um, it makes more sense and it, it just, um. I mean, to have it in that corner near the house is, um, ma- it makes aesthetic sense to me, and I also think that, um. It's tucked, it's tucked in, um. It's good use of space and it, it saves the tree, uh, and I, I, I support all of that, so I supporting this.
So I would make a motion to support, um.
To recommend favorable action.
Um, concerning, no, they're seeking a dimensional variance. Oh, so I would make a motion that, that the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals. Favorable action on the application for a dimensional variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Nick.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
E Ching.
Hi.
I say hi as well. So five zero, good luck.
Thanks, everyone.
Um.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Um, so, is Triton Basketball still with us? No, they've decided to go.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Well, I think it works that you have it, that once you come in, you can't unmute.
Yeah. Well, the, the thing is, you can, I can't turn people's video off. So that's, they could still be obnoxious visually, but not audibly. Um, so we have next before us petition number three nine nine seven, that of Asara School, et cetera. Uh, seeking site plan review under various sections, so has been permitted demolish an existing building, construct new building that will have twenty-five percent or more floor area. And require twenty more parking spaces. And also site plan review. Um, so it's a change of grade of more than five hundred square feet and more than six percent. In addition, they're seeking a special permit, so has been permitted to demolish the existing building, instruct a new building that will be located closer to another building, then permitted as of right. So, um, who do we have with us? Uh, someone is, oh, Mister Murray, let me, um. I need to, I'm going to make you a co-host. This is how we've keeping out all the, all the Zoom bombers. So I will make you a co-host, so you should be able to speak and, I should try that, make sure that works.
Okay, I think that did work. Thank you so much.
Is there someone with you tonight who should be?
Uh, yes, and, and I do have with me the founder and the director of the Asara School in Winchester. Uh, and that's Courtney Dickinson, and she is with us tonight along with Jacob, uh, Murray. Uh, who is the professional engineer. And also Kevin DeVal, uh, who is the facilities manager of the facility. And I want to thank you, by the way, for accommodating us. We have an earlier meeting tonight. Uh, uh, that was in person with the historical commission. And, um, uh, we've already had our meeting with the, uh, design review board. And, um, if you have any interest in, I know you don't get the meetings, uh, notes that quickly, the design review board uh, did, uh, recommend unanimously favorable action, um, on the, uh, project, uh, as did the historical commission. The historical commission determined there was no historical resource and, uh, was very favorably inclined to the design, so both of those unanimous decisions, I thought you might want to know about. Even though you people, of course, obviously have your own, uh, inquiry, and we're here to answer any questions. We're here really as guests, uh, to answer any questions that you might have about this project.
Okay, um, so, um. Brian, you are back. Uh, Brian left us, and so I apologize, Brian. I didn't pull you forward on the hot tub, but I don't think the hot tub was an issue. Um, but why don't we have, we go to our assistant town engineer? Um, we, and give us a, a loadout. What is your, um, analysis of this project, please?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, so this project, uh, has a lot of interesting components to it. Um, firstly, they are within the one hundred-year floodplain of the Apogee River. Um, the, the, um. The design team and the engineering department, conservation and representatives from D C R, the FEMA, um, expert. We, you know, did a preliminary review, so the, the applicants understand the rules and regulations on how to design within the floodplain. It looks like they are meeting those requirements. They are, um, addressing compens, compensate, uh, compensation storage for any fill that they bring in, so that it looks like from a FEMA standpoint, they're on the right track. From a stormwater perspective. We'll be reviewing the project. Since this is within the floodplain, it also falls under conservation jurisdiction, conservation commission jurisdiction. So from a stormwater standpoint, we'll be reviewing it through, um. The Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Wetlands Protection Regulations. Um, and the applicant has been, is designing their stormwater to meet those regulations. Um, from a civil standpoint. They're proposing a new water and sewer connection, which we'll have some comments on. Nothing, nothing extraordinary. However, there are some items within their design, which we'll, we'll need to flesh out a little bit further and understand a little bit better regarding the number of parking spaces that would be required for a site like for their project. Um, how that relates to existing parking. Also recommending that uh, the, um, Z B A use their powers to hire a, a, a traffic consultant, a peer review to review under the fifty-three G um, regulations to peer review their traffic study to make sure that the, um, the impacts to the neighborhood, because as we all know, that the, the cross intersection across Holton is, uh, very challenging. And to make sure that the applicant's project interweaves well with, with, um, the traffic areas. Um, other high-level things, just making sure that we're consistent with how trees are protected, how they're shown. Um, and, uh, let's see. Yeah, so those are the high, the high-level things. So in, in a, a high level, I think they've got a good framework here. Just need to keep, continue to flesh out some of the details.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's see, any questions from the board?
I have comments, but not questions.
Um. What's the change in student capacity? Like, how many students and staff are currently at Asara? And what would be the, what would be the goal enrollment and stuff?
Can you hear me? This is Courtney.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, we currently have a hundred and forty-three students at Five Lowell Avenue. And this building, um, at One Lowell Avenue would be an additional building for our kind of school. And our primary need for this building is to become less crowded. We're very, um. We just need more space for our programming and our students. There is, uh, it is possible that we would, over the coming years, add some additional enrollment as many as eighty additional students. Um, the downstairs spaces are all enrichment spaces, but the kind of classroom spaces that could have more enrollment growth would be upstairs. And just as a note, we have done a traffic study. Um, and with those plans, I believe Kevin, our facilities lead, can confirm that the traffic study court had said there would be no material impact on, um, the, in the cross-street traffic area.
Um, what, what, what currently is the use of this building one right now?
Should I speak to that, or should I let Larry speak to it?
I'd be happy to say, right now, the building was purchased, um, by the Asara School eight months ago. And, uh, prior to, um, its, um, purchase. Uh, it was a printing business that was operated in that facility, if I remember correctly. And, um, so that, uh, this, this is actually a, uh, little less than eight acres, um, of um, industrial condominium buildings. And, um, uh, it was established, uh, a number of years ago, um, with, um, a, a total of seven buildings, I believe. Uh, and, uh, currently, the Asara School, uh, has been for the last ten years, been in building number five. And, uh, so this building is right next door. It's a one-story, uh, building that was used, uh, if, in a, a printing company. And, um, the, uh, the new building, of course, uh, will be replacing that. Uh, if we get the approvals that are required in order to move forward. If we get the approvals that are required in order to move forward.
Okay, a follow-up question too, I think the. One of the special premise was to. The the distance between two buildings was a little too tight then dimensionally required, is it that at this point? Is it somewhere along here that you're you're? That is the problem?
So i- in fact, right now, the distance between building number five, which is owned by a Sarah. And building number one, which is owned by a Sarah, the distance between them is twenty six. Point three feet, that's the existing distance between the buildings. And the new building is going to actually be a little bit further away, so it will be more compliant than the existing condition, it will be twenty seven point two. Feet away, which isn't a lot, but it is going to be more compliant than the existing. Distance between the two buildings.
And are we talking about, can you see my cursor here, about right here?
Yes, yes, that's correct, yeah.
And then you, on your application, you said that it's it's for fire trucks to go through, and you had verified with the fire department that that. Is still.
That's correct, and I think as part of the materials submitted, there is a plan that was submitted that. That shows that, that the largest fire apparatus that exists in the town of Winchester would be able to. Get through that material without any difficulty, and I'm sure that if. Need be that that the Jacob Murray, the engineer, would be able to address that issue specifically, but I think it's part of the submission package.
Right. And then the thing that triggered your site plan review is a regrading of more than five hundred square feet, and so I'm assuming it's it's just part of all of this. If the regrading is just part of the whole, whole sort of site.
Right, actually, because the the property is in the floodplain, we actually have to build this building up. So it's above the floodplain, and that is considered to be filling in of the floodplain storage, so we have to compensate for that. And so that's why we fall under that particular provision of the site plan review, which is simply part of the. Compensation for flood storage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
So I actually did have a question about parking, which is that in your narrative, you describe the number of parking spaces. That the entire condominium association controls. But I count, I think I counted twenty seven, maybe I have to remember and do it again. Parking spaces that the Sarah School has control over, and I just remember from. Occasions when I have had a reason to pick up or drop off someone from that school. That the people that are in the reading this building nine. Are, they're really quite emphatic about a Sarah School users and visitors not parking in their parking spaces, so. My question is. What is the, I should probably know this, I'm asking you, what's the zoning bylaws say, when you. Redevelop and add to a business, redevelop a building and add to a business more square footage. What triggers the, what is the resulting required? Parking count, not counting the parking spaces that are owned by other condominium owners.
Right, so the, the, the fact that the new building will be larger than the existing building does increase the. The required parking spaces for the, for the use and for the building itself. But all of the parking really is part of a condominium, if you will, with certain spaces, of course, that are. Specified for each building, and so the total spaces that are available in the. Condominium exceeds the number of spaces that are needed. And I would have to. Ask either Courtney or Jacob to explain further, but I know that. They have gone to great lengths to try to. Solve those issues, those parking issues that come about during the busy times of drop off and pickup that. That you mentioned, Sally, and that's definitely been an issue that they have been addressing during the past few years.
Okay, so does that, that doesn't answer the question about what's the required number of parking spaces for the square footage of. A Sarah School with the addition of building one.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if, if you have that number, Jacob, if Jacob could come in, you might be able to answer that question.
Yes, I'm looking, I'm bringing it up here, I, I know that it was, I wanted to say that it was about. Two forty that, that they had and they needed somewhere around two hundred.
Yeah, it's in your document, it says a hundred ninety seven parking spaces and two forty four provided.
That, that, yes.
I think what Sally's asking is how many parking spaces your project requires. Not what the overall C of parking can accommodate.
That's the one ninety seven it requires.
Seven, does that, is that for the, that's for your school?
That's for the entire condo.
Right, so how much?
Wait, entire condominium complex or the entire condominium of the school?
The complex.
Yeah, well.
So there are some exclusive spaces for each building, and then there are some open shared spots. And it is somewhat, somewhat confusing, but. Ultimately, all the land is co-owned by all of the different businesses in the office park. The other thing that I, I believe, and maybe Jacob is the right person to clarify, because the use is as a school. Some of the parking requirements. With adding more square footage aren't the same as what they would be if the square footage was a regular office use with, with adults. But. We are within what is needed for the new building constructed, that is being constructed.
So the operating premise here is that there would be designated. Parking that's available to all the condominium owners, visitors and employees and whatever. So there's shared parking, first come, first served, and then there's assigned parking for each of the. What do you have, like seven or eight different owners in the condo?
Correct, yeah, correct.
So there's designated to each owner, and then there's shared by all owners. And that would somehow be very clearly marked with striping and signs and so on.
And that's one of the appeals to the condo association is that within doing this project with hiring the civil engineers and the other surveying that we're doing. As part of the, this project, there's a campus upgrade piece to this, that we are gonna be. Kind of redesignating the clarity of who is in charge of which spots, because in the process of selling all these pieces of. Buildings off the prior owner, it, it, the deeds made it a little bit unclear which parts were exclusive use. And the land survey generally doesn't actually capture accurately the spaces that are actually there. So that's part of the civil engineering piece of this project, once we, we go to the next step of developing and all, that, that is. The other kind of office owners are really appreciative of.
Oh, yeah, I would think they would be very appreciative of, of upfront problem solving on that matter. I have one, one other issue to discuss, but I can defer to comments from other members of the board first.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Because I guess my main concern is that there is an adequate plan for. Given that it's in the floodplain, and then it's at the bottom of a slope coming from Cross Street that, that. I mean, it looked like, I, I did happen to see that a large. I guess, stormwater management, but I just wanted to. Kind of get some assurance that that was going to be adequate for this, this new development.
Nicholas, I can speak to that, Jacob Murray, the civil engineer. The floodplain wise, the building will, the first floor of the building will be one foot above the floodplain. Which is part of the reason, is part of the floodplain is also being filled with that. There'll be compensatory storage in the play area and then behind the building that'll be added. And then that'll be taken care of stormwater wise, so that the building's both out of the floodplain, but the floodplain itself is slightly larger. Than it was before, and then stormwater wise, we are reducing the impervious. By taking away some of the pavement area in the play area and replacing it with. A porous turf material, synthetic turf material, to provide some infiltration in the ground where, where possible. And then the rest from the roof, we are connecting with drainage pipes to the existing system. Unfortunately, the groundwater is very high in that area, so there's no real great area to, to store. The roof runoff water infiltrate it right into the ground.
Oh, sorry. Harry, did you want to say?
Wait, Jacob's on mute now.
I'm unmuted.
Okay.
That was, that was all, you guys.
Okay. Great, thank you, thank you very, thank you.
I have a question, and it's so wonderful to have you guys here, because we've been really thinking about this area as, as the planning board. And thinking a lot about improvements to the streetscape and, and safety for pedestrians or other non-car users. And so could you give us a overview of how you're improving this area with, with that, with this project?
Would you like to speak to that, I think probably Courtney, would, would that be appropriate for you to speak to?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to speak to it. Should I let Jacob take first crack, or do you want me to take first crack?
If Jacob wants to go.
The, the general, we're, we're, our focus is around the building, and so we have, we show on the plans. The general circulation pattern, and that will be in a lot of ways maintained with what the school already does, they have an extensive drop off pickup. Situation, it would be, we're gonna put more walkways around the new building and then connect them to the walkways. In front of five Lowell Ave, and then also have a painted walkway. Around the southern side of the building that can be dedicated to pedestrians during those, that is particularly helpful during those. Pickup drop off times.
Right.
So again, that's mainly around the building, there, there was some discussion about potentially having a crosswalk extend from. The Estera School to Cross Street. For times when they, they are going, either people are coming to and from, or they have to take the students to a playground nearby. But that quickly enters a private road, a private road portion of Lowell Ave. That'll need to be signed off on by those butters, which isn't, we don't have at the moment.
Yeah, that's it, we hope we can do a walkway that goes up Lowell Avenue. And the last thirty feet of Lowell Avenue is actually owned by the town. And Kevin and I, Kevin is on here today, we just met with the police safety officer. Frank and one of his colleagues to talk about the crosswalk that's up there, and there, there is some. Work that could be done on, on the pedestrian side, both safety signaling as well as sidewalk, but some of that is town owned. Areas that weren't, that's not in our control, so it's. But that is, we're gonna try to work that through to support a pedestrian access into the park. That enables our kids also to go up in safe ways.
E Ching, could I follow up your, your safety question with one that's related? That, I just know from, from parking my car and walking that it can be very treacherous. To walk, like if I parked in that area that is sort of to the left of the North Arrow. Up against the curved road. And wanted to just jump across the street to Sarah. That it's a treacherous thing to do, that that would be a place where if you had a lot of parents parking in common parking in the center of. The condominium lane. That there would need to be a crosswalk from the building five. Building one area over to the center of the site where perhaps the common parking would be. Because it's really dangerous. And I also think that the striping going up the hill before you get onto town owned land. Should be improved, and that's a burden to the whole condominium association to just really tighten up. The striping and directional control and crosswalks through the whole condominium association. Because I think at least my familiarity with just that one little area is, is pretty dangerous.
Okay, any more comments from the board?
I have a tree comment, if.
I would like to make the tree comment, Sally. You can make your tree comment after I make my tree comment, how's that? I just.
Okay.
I, I just want to talk about the fact that I don't see on your drawings. I don't believe you've marked which trees are actually going to be coming down.
On, this, this is Jacob, on the site prep and demo sheet, sheet one. In the rear, they show there are circles with X's in it that show trees that are coming down. And then circles without X's in them that are larger and dashed that show tree protection.
I'm on it right now, DM.
Yeah, but that's on my tiny laptop.
Okay.
Right, no, it is on the sheet, yeah, but they, they marked the ones that are marked for protection. And the question is.
Oh, I missed those, I, I, I did miss those.
But, but, but wait, does that mean that the ones that are not marked will come down as necessary?
Is that a correct assumption?
The ones that are marked for being taken down, which are predominantly the ones in the rear of building one. That are, that are either almost going to be in the footprint of the new building. That's where those will be coming down and are marked to come down.
Okay, I can't see the X's in this view, I wonder if I can zoom in.
Yeah, that's why I've turned to the big sheet of paper.
Oh, it's here, you see that? I, I'm like circling it with my cursor.
It's the little, yeah, I somehow, I misunderstood what those were.
Those X's are, it says remove and dispose of concrete block, but.
Can you zoom in a little more?
Where, those X's are the trees to come out?
Yes, those X's are the trees to come out. Okay.
Can I just clarify, the, the part of the vision of this whole project is to really beautify the campus and reforest. To some extent, an area that's really, you know, nineteen sixty five. Ugly buildings and a huge splat of asphalt, so, so. A really like exciting and fun part about our program is our adventure-based playground and trees. And so part of what we're doing in this is peeling back some of the asphalt in the back. Sections that will become turf, a section of it will become kind of a reforested area, where, where, where we will be planting more shade trees. And a section will become more of a garden zone, and then the area that's directly behind One Lowell. That has trees, that deciduous tree cover is something, it's extremely, extremely important to us. There are some trees that are very close to the building that are really kind of volunteer. Sort of, you know, rubbishy trees that are, they're basically growing into the current roof and they're at a very steep angle. But it's the kind of tree, and there's a lot of kind of. Unmanaged mess back there that actually is, is. Kind of in that category of it's harming the ability for the good trees to thrive, so. Upkeeping that area in a way that has been always ignored is part of, that will be the result of those need to come down for the new building, but they need to come down anyways. But adding additional kind of strong tree canopy. Further into what is our exclusive use playground area behind the five Lowell is part of the broader picture. And in fact, the design of the building is meant to sort of allude to the bottom floor is in a smaller footprint because it's in the flood zone. But the upper floor is intended to kind of like hearken to that notion of treehouse. And that kind of the forest canopy and. You know, as much as you can create a nature-based playground in the middle of industrial office park and add more of that type of nature space, that is the intention. And the, the kind of the peeling back of the pavement and creating more of that. Obviously, as, you know, we've got kids who are thinking about climate change, and, and that also gives us a lot more porous. Surface for the stormwater management, so the first people we hired on this job were civil engineers before we ever hired an architect. Because this, that, all of these pieces are so important because of the site, so I just want to say, I really agree with everybody. Having super clear dismissal lanes, upgrading safety and pedestrian walkways in all relevant areas. That's all part of the kind of campus improvement piece of this project.
So on, on, did you make your tree comment yet, so I should still, still hold mine off?
No, go ahead, make your, make your tree comments.
So on sheet C four, E Ching, if you can go to that. I ended up spending a lot of attention, paying a lot of attention to the changes in grade behind building one. And it took me a lot of time to understand the lines and so on, but. There is on sheet. The, the, the tree protection page, which. It's, yeah, C one, okay, so we're going back and forth between C one and C four. And on C one, you can see the tree protection circles. And in particular, you can also see that some of those circles are really big. And for instance, one of the biggest circles, it's a gray dot surrounded by black dashes, and it's the. And it's the largest gray dot, E Ching, it's sort of like straight off the, the, the western. Side of building five, but it's very big. And the grading, when you go to C four, um, is such that you're going to be taking out, I think it's two or three feet of soil. To push the grade line twenty-five back.
So.
And the consequence of that is that the tree roots get completely removed.
So Sally, this is Jacob, um, the, the, as Courtney has mentioned, we are, we want to do our best to save those trees in the area. Unfortunately, this is also one of the limited areas that can be used for compensatory flood storage. Uh, the hope is, and what is shown on the plan is that the twenty-four contour that runs through. The, the main area of the trees is able to be maintained. And then in the rear behind it, it actually goes up on a hill. Uh, and we, their roots should be, should be below there at that point in time. Where we should be able to be able to make that cut for the twenty-five contour or, uh, to provide the compensatory flood storage. Uh, ideally from a design perspective, we don't want to cut back here. But, but there's nowhere to place on the Sarah School property where we can make such cuts.
Right, no, I understand that. You do have in one of your detail sheets that the critical root zone. Um, is the diameter in feet that the tree is in inches. So a forty-eight inch tree would have a forty-eight foot diameter or a twenty-foot, twenty-four foot radius. Critical root zone and that very large tree right there, if you measure out twenty-four feet. It, it, um. Prevents you from modifying the grade to the north of that very large tree. And I hear what Courtney's saying and I totally embrace it, that, you know, you take out trees if you have to, and then you replace them even more so. Um, and that the consciousness of the school and that whole school ethic is well in place. I just don't think that you're going to be able to save that forty-eight inch tree. And I understand why you're moving the grade is to get more compensatory storage. But I don't think that your note about critical root zone fits with the note about. Changing the grade and cutting the soil back to get more storage.
In, in that area, I mean, we'll, we'll, as construction goes, where we will monitor that, uh, depending on, on where it falls. But there's a possibility those, some of those trees might have to come down and they'll be.
Including ones that are marked to be protected. Is that what you're saying?
Potentially, if, if that, if the, if the root zone ends up happening, if, if it turns out when excavation happens that the root zone is, needs to be hampered, needs to be. Harmed in order to, um, in order to make compensatory flood storage, yes, unfortunately. And they'll be, they can be replaced, but at, at the moment, there's no other spot where there's a twenty-five, twenty-six contour on site. That where compensatory flood storage can be provided.
So my understanding about compensatory flood storage on this site, and I would ask Brian Manter if he wants to chime in after. Um, that basically the way the, the water runs off this site when it rains. Is it's all sheet drainage to, to catch basins, right? Um, but you're saying that if there were a flood event. The, and the water came up from the river and shooted and sheeted north towards the slope. Um, that you need that northern border compensatory storage for that floodwater? Is that what it's for?
Yes, exactly. Or you said it's a contour by contour, uh, criteria that we need to meet.
Right. I just, I know that forty-eight inch trees are not available in nurseries. And the only people who can buy even twenty-four inch trees is someone like the Harvard Business School. Um, so that tree to me is one of the most important natural assets on the entire property. And it doesn't look to me like you've got your critical root zone protected such that it could be that that tree. Will either be protected but die. Or you'll just take it out before it dies because you have to. And I think that's sad. And I would like you to look for other ways to save it.
Uh, I, I agree, it's sad. And we can definitely look to other reasons to save it. Um, I, I can say that we, um, we can take another look, but at the, at the site, which is where we have to provide compensatory storage. Um, it's, it's been difficult. Um, so there's possibly for maybe a large well where we can kind of keep things raised there. Um, but we can look into that.
Well, I noticed that there's a dry well on the west border of the property. I don't know if I see it on this sheet. Um, it might be.
Different, if, if I could just point out that it's. And we still.
Well, so this is a long, complicated observation and I apologize for that. So just I'll, I'll stop where I did and, and.
I just.
There's something to address.
Yeah, I, I, I'm wondering if the board has a sense of where they want to go on this. Is there a motion to, to recommend favorable action? Is there a motion to? Recommend unfavorable action? Is there a motion to not take a motion?
Well, if I was going to construct a motion, it would be generally around favorable action with conditions.
So do you want to construct that motion?
I can try. Um, I might like to have Brian Manter weigh in too. On whether there are engineering department conditions, but as a planning board member. My condition is that protected trees be protected to their critical root zone and protected from. Damage that would cause them to die after construction. That's what tree protection's for. Um, and if they've pledged to protect that forty-eight inch tree. The fact is a major selling point of this whole thing to the immediate residential of Butters. And this is an intersection of an IL and a residential district. It's a big issue in Winchester, um, is that you will preserve that tree buffer. Um, and I don't know exactly which house will be negative impact, negatively impacted when that forty-eight inch tree is removed. But I don't think that comports with preserving the buffer. So, um, my condition would be that. Generally, I'm in favor, totally love it. But I really want to make sure that buffer is, is maintained. While you're addressing all of the storage, storm, stormwater drainage and flood drainage.
So can you put that in a succinct sentence?
I would recommend favorable motion on this property with the condition. That more work be done to confirm the absolute protection of trees in the buffer. Zone to the residential properties to the north.
Okay, a condition that more work be done to confirm the protection.
To assure the protection.
To assure. The protection. Of trees. And, uh, is that really north? I don't know what direction.
I think it is north and it's not technically called a buffer zone. It's just a, it's just the planting.
In the, in the zone to the north of building one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, to the north of building one. Do you want to call out that particular tree?
Yeah, I can in particular because forty-eight inch trees, I don't even know if we're ever going to see any trees that are, that are. Seated today and will ever grow to forty-eight inches. So.
Forty, forty-eight, forty-eight feet, I think, so.
Well, forty-eight foot diameter is the tree root zone.
Oh.
The tree itself is forty-eight inches across.
Other diameter, right.
That, of the trunk.
Okay, so, so the motion is, um. Vote for favorable action or recommend favorable action with condition that more work be done to assure the protection of trees in the zone to the north of building one. In particular, the forty-eight inch tree. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Carrie got in first. That was Carrie, right?
Carrie, who has a cold.
Yep.
I was allergic.
Well, vote please, Nick.
Aye.
Uh, E Ching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I say aye as well.
But what, dear, what about the other discussion points? I'm confused. We talked about, um, crosswalks and safety and we talked about, um, um, the.
Wasn't, was.
Parking.
Did you want to put that in your motion?
Well, that, I mean, that wasn't the only condition I had is what I mean to say. It just kind of.
But it sounded like a lot of the answers from those questions were satisfactory. So I don't know.
They would, they, they are that what I heard is that the school is in conversations with the town about a crosswalk up to. Cross street and they're in conversations with the condominium association. About crosswalks from the school to central parking and better striping and clearly identified common areas. Those are all in process. They're not done. So to me.
E Ching, if I may, um, so the app in the, the submission packet, they reference a traffic report. Um, however, I, I haven't seen that in the submission. Um, maybe it didn't get filed or whatever. Um, so that'll be something that maybe we need to follow up with them on so we can take a look at it. But additionally to that, um, I think it would be important that, that we recommend, or at least the engineering department will recommend that the ZBA. Hire as a peer consultant to review that traffic report, just to make sure that we're all seeing the same things. And that any recommendations that shake out, you know, with respect to town owned land. Um, crosswalks and how that can all be, um. Integrated together, tied together, um, would, would work, would work well, but. I'm not a traffic management specialist. I don't really understand it that well. So we do have folks in town that do do that work.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I think that would go a long way for this project. So.
Question to engineering, do you have any other conditions that, that you would recommend? That the planning board put on their motion or will you put any other conditions on your own letter of recommendation to the ZBA?
Uh, yes, we'll have additional recommendations to ZBA. You know, some of them will be recommending, recommending that the applicant consider certain aspects of their design. Um, and they'd provide feedback whether they feel that that would be applicable to me, um, to the design, an example being the, um. The, uh, part of the context water chamber.
When you say design, you mean storm water management or the whole building design?
Uh, for the stormwater management.
Okay.
So they, they're proposing to put in a contact stormwater chamber, which provides, um. Water, water quality aspect to tree water. So just, you know, that would be a rec, a recommendation that the applicant consider relocating that to another location within their network. You know, whether that, that they feel that that's a, a good recommendation or not, but then there'll, there'll be some requirements. That they need to, you know, address with respect to the water and sewer connections that may. Need to be looked at a little more closely.
Okay, so that would all be in a separate recommendation. Okay, I understand.
So we're just looking for additional. Any additional conditions from the planning board's perspective. So I think traffic is a condition and we'll probably, we'll just attach another motion. So if traffic is a condition that we want to recommend a fifty-three G consultant. Other things that the planning board wants to make, can recommend.
These are additional conditions to the main motion, is that right?
The motion's been taken and voted on, so this would be a completely new motion. So I don't think we can open up them once we voted it in. I mean, let's just, it's already ten o'clock, so I really want to move this forward. We still have.
I want to move it forward too, but I just get really confused because I wanted to say that there was a tree condition. And there's a safety condition and there's a traffic condition. And I'm sorry that I didn't do it all in.
No, no, it's fine, Sally. I'm just saying, what are those conditions? So we've got a fifty-three G consultant. And, and what are the other conditions you'd like us to vote on?
Um, well, I, I'm really happy that Courtney's working with the, the DPW to solve the problem of. Having proper crosswalk access at the top of the road there. I think it's really important that that be a condition of our approval.
Which part, you're talking with them or that they achieve the?
That they achieve a sidewalk. And that they, and then the conversations with the condominium association that they achieve. I clearly identified parking spaces and that they achieve clear striking, striping, um. To wherever people using the school would be walking to their cars, including crosswalks in.
I don't know, we can ask them to put, we can put conditions on things that are within their control. But I don't know that our sidewalk is within their control because it requires the town to agree. Am I correct? I mean, I think that's striping and, you know.
All right, well, I mean, I'm generally in favor of the whole project.
Yeah, so I just.
So I don't, I just thought it would be good to try to save the trees and keep the kids safe.
I agree. So, so keeping the kids safe is, you know, they control what's in this condo. Anything beyond that is out of their control. So we can't put a, we can recommend that they continue their conversations with the town. And with other parties to.
All right.
Improve pedestrian access to the property. So that would be a recommendation of continuing. Conversations with town and other parties. To improve pedestrian access.
Right. Um, I honestly don't think this is going to get built in such a way that it's going to be just plain treacherous for people to go to the school. I don't think that's the outcome at all. Um, and I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it will be the outcome that all the trees on the north boundary. Um, will fail and that the people will be looking down on the top of building one. I don't think that's going to happen either. Um, so I was just trying to address those things in a way that was affirmative.
I'm more than willing to write down Sally, what you would like to say. I just need some words, so.
Okay, I moved that we recommend favorable action. On the special permit, no, on the site plan review. With the conditions that obviously all of engineering's concerns about stormwater drainage and flood drainage are fully addressed. And that trees that are marked to be saved on the north boundary, the, the steep slope. Um, be protected according to their detail for critical root zone. And, um, that the grading be adjusted as much as can possibly be done to save the really big tree.
So we've already voted on that.
Okay, well, then this is additional. Okay.
Right, so, so, so I, I guess, and you pointed out and pardon me the.
I'm sorry that I'm not reciting it in.
No, 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 you, you pointed out that we actually have two things. We have to vote on a special, two special permits. And a site plan review.
Oh, it is two? So for the special permit part, um, on the, um. Short distance between two buildings, I recommend favorable action.
Okay, thank you.
I second that.
Okay, so short distance between two buildings.
Thank you, E Ching.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm losing it. Um, short distance between two buildings. Um, E Ching votes favorable action. Uh, Sally seconds. Is there, okay, roll call vote, Carrie?
Aye.
Uh, Nick?
Aye.
E Ching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Dibs his eye as well. Thank you. Um, E Ching, you can take over now. You're running to me.
No, and then for the other special permit, there was one on demolition and, um, I, I think it was two in one.
Yeah, if you go to the first page.
Trying to find it.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
There we go, yeah.
Uh, site plan review.
Is it section three, five, seven, so as to be permitted to demolish the existing building and construct a new building that will be located.
So can we just put that?
Although there are two site plan reviews.
For site plan review under all these sections.
Okay, so right.
Twenty-five percent more floor area, okay.
Yeah, so there's two site plan reviews and one special permit. Okay.
Okay, so the special permit.
We just did.
We just voted.
Okay.
And the site plan review, Sally, you were trying, you were trying to, and I'm not sure the distinction between this and this.
Uh, well, okay, yeah, that's what I'm looking at. So the, the, the site plan review for nine, five, one, one and nine, five, one, three. Um, has to do with demolishing the building and adding a building, creating a building that's going to have twenty-five percent more floor area. And will require twenty more parking spaces for the entire condominium trust. Okay? That's what the first site plan review is for. The second site plan review is to change the grade of, by more than. Of, of more than five hundred square feet by more than six percent.
So the, so I would, I would say, and perhaps we should revote this just to make it legal.
I think we do.
Our first vote was concerned, was in concerning the site plan review for changing the grade.
That's correct.
That's where you were talking about the trees. So why don't we go back and, um, revote that? So the motion from Sally was to approve, let's call it site plan review. Of nine, five, one, seven.
Right.
Um, for. The great change under the condition, more work be done to assure the protection of trees in the zone to the north of the building and in particular the forty-eight inch tree. Um, any other protections. For that one. Any other conditions for that site?
I think, no, because the recommendation for traffic review should be on the next one.
Yes, I am in agreement. Sally, is that sufficient?
Yes, that's great. I'm so grateful to have this sorted out into three votes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, E Ching.
You see how we struggle without a town planner?
Yeah. Uh, um, so Carrie, do you still want to, um, second that motion?
A second.
Okay. Okay, if you're still with us, we'll get as soon as possible we done, so you can go back to.
I think she's got herself.
Yeah, oh, okay, so roll call vote, uh Nick.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
E Ching. Did we lose E Ching?
Oh, aye. Aye.
Carrie.
Aye.
And Debs' eye, okay, so we're, we've got two down, one to go.
Okay, I recommend favorable action for site plan review under section nine point five point one, nine point five point one one, nine point five point three with condition to um hire fifty three G traffic report or traffic consultant. Was that the only?
And and that the conversation conversations with the condominium association about making sure that parking spaces sufficient for the school are labeled for the school or or whatever, no, that's the wrong way to do it, that's not how Courtney is working it out.
To continue conversations with the condo board and the town on parking and safety.
And safety, that's good, E Ching.
Okay, so I've got site plan review under nine five one and nine five three. Uh, hire the conditions approved, hire fifty three G traffic consultant and continue conversations with the town, with the condo board and town about parking and safety.
Yes.
And is that it?
Yes.
Okay, so that is E Ching's motion, I believe, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, um. Where am I today? No.
I'm so sorry, may I just ask a question? The for hiring of the traffic consultant, how does that fit with that we already did a traffic study? Are you saying that we're going to be asked to hire an additional traffic consultant or?
So, yeah, so the way it works is that the state allows towns to request um an independent review of certain things about your project. So for instance, uh, traffic is one, stormwater is another one. Um, design would be another one, so that allows us to get a third, another independent eye to look at what your traffic.
But you're saying we need to bear the cost of that, so we hired the traffic study place that was a third party to do a neutral thing, and now we need to hire another group to review their work to make sure it's still neutral, is that, is that?
That is, yes, and.
I think the town chooses the the peer reviewer and you pay for it.
Yeah, what happens is that, yeah, so there's some, if the zoning board wants to go forward with that, they will um, recommend, they will, they will um.
They will further say, yes, you indeed you need to do that.
Yeah, they will.
Got it.
Yeah. So you, what you do is you put the money in escrow with the town, the town hires a consultant, that money is used to pay for the consultant, so it's a complete independent thing. Um, it's a pretty.
I'm so sorry to interrupt your flow, I just didn't understand, so.
No, I understand, I apologize, yeah, that's a good question, it's it's fairly standard on large projects to get fifty three Gs, that's the state stature is fifty three G. Um, okay, so um we have a E Ching made the motion, Sally, you seconded it. Um, Nick.
Aye.
Uh, Carrie.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
E Ching.
Aye.
And Debs' eye as well, okay. Um, I hopefully we have done this appropriately, um and I think we did, Larry, you won't tell us if we didn't, I'm sure.
I mean, the only thing I would say just briefly is that as far as the site plan review is concerned, there's actually three of them, one of them is nine point five point one subsection one, and the other is nine point five point one subsection three. And then the nine point five point one subsection seven is the one that deals with the five hundred uh feet at six degrees, and then for the special permits, i- it's it's three point five three and three point five seven. So I think the, certainly the the uh the intent of the board, I think, is fairly clear and and obviously it's uh very difficult, um it dislaid out to try to sort that all through, but I think that basically the board is is approving the petition uh with the various uh items that are outlined in the uh public notice.
Yes, I think that is, I think the intent of the board is clear, even if our words are not always.
Well, yeah, the the intent of the board is expressed in our attempt at crafting descriptions of conditions.
We will make sure that the intent of the board is clear in what we transmit to the Z B A. So, um uh, thank you for bearing with us, um, okay.
Well, I want to thank you also for all the work that you do for the town and for all the hard work that your board does, uh and for allowing us to to come to this meeting in a way that allowed us to also get to the historical commission in the same night, so thank you all.
Oh, you're very welcome, I just, I didn't want.
It's a real service to the town, what you all do, and it it can, I'm sure, you almost always feel very, very thankless. Um, but I think thinking deeply about protecting those exquisite trees all through Winchester and making sure we're doing things that makes sense around um safety and um and conveyance in ways that really work for everybody, I think are, they're all really important conditions, and I, again, I just really appreciate the service you all are providing the town. And it also so late at night, so thank you.
Well, you're very welcome and thank you for 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 that sentiment.
Thank you, Courtney.
Yeah, um. So I think um the planning board is going to have to move back to um, our action items. Um, so we have I don't know if we're going to get to the meeting minutes this evening, I'm going to suggest that we don't.
We've moved the meeting minutes, and we should move discussion of fall town meeting to another meeting.
Yeah.
Right, and then we then we can move that we adjourn the meeting.
No, no, I wish we could do that, but we do have to talk about a search committee for the town planner.
Right.
We do have to reconstitute that now that we have a number of applicants.
Can it be just the same group, Deab, do we have?
Have it be the same group.
It's the board, it's at the board's pleasure, if the board wishes it to be the same group, then someone please make a motion.
I would move that we reconstitute the screening committee that existed for the first round of applicants for the town planner.
I I second that motion.
Okay, and I just wanted to ask, would anyone on currently on the board who wants, I'm more than willing to step down from that committee if someone else on the board wants to step in. And crickets, so I'm guessing no one wants to step in, which is perfectly fine, I just wanted you to have the choice, okay, so we have, um, we have a motion to reconstitute screening committee as was before. Um, so let's have a vote, Nick.
Aye.
Did it get seconded?
Yeah, it did, somebody, I think, someone seconded it, yeah.
Sorry, okay, good.
Um, and, um, so Nick says aye, Sally.
Aye.
E Ching.
Aye.
Carrie.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Um, the other point that we need to talk about is the interim town planner, so um I had a discussion with um town manager and assistant town manager this afternoon about how to handle that, and so if we hire, so if we, so we were, Sally reached out to our um our candidate who was moved on to another position and because she had said she could give us recommendations uh of places we could turn to, and one of them turns out to be um planners in a pinch, which I believe is is a is a a temp agency for planners.
Isn't it cute, isn't there a nannies in a pinch thing?
Yeah, and then there's.
There's such a need for planners that that would be.
And there's also consulting planners, so these are contractors, so here's the deal, if we, if we do a contractor for more than ten thousand dollars, then we have to go through an R F P process. If we hire someone as a temporary employee, it's almost instantaneous. If we ask, if we do a contractor for less than ten thousand, then we can do a single source.
And when you say contractor, you mean someone to recruit?
No, someone to do the job.
To do the work.
To do the work.
Right, well, how do we know if it's going to be less than ten?
Well, one question is figuring out what prevailing wages are and how much do we think we're going to need, so let's say we need an interim for, say, ten hours a week, let's say. How much does it cost for ten hours a week, how much does ten thousand bucks get us, does it get us to the end of the fiscal year?
Don't say ten, I think the the state limit is fifteen.
Oh, for it to be a temp?
Or just minimum wage?
Oh, no, no, no.
Fifteen dollars, no, we were saying hours.
No, no, I'm not, I'm saying ten hours.
Okay.
Not ten dollars, ten hours. Yeah, we gotta pay at least as much as Burger King each thing.
No wonder nobody's.
Yeah, no, so the idea is that if we say we need ten hours a week, if they cost us a hundred bucks an hour, I'm just creating funny numbers, how many hours do we get for less than ten thousand bucks, does that take us to the end of June? Which is, hopefully, that's the end of the fiscal year, and that's when our extra money runs out, because we're going to essentially take this money out of the money we would have paid Brian if he'd been around.
Oh, we can take it out of his salary?
Yes, because it's still in our personal services line, so we can use that.
So, but to to make it under ten thousand, you have to under ten thousand, so you don't have to put it out to bid?
We would have to do an R F P. We have to get three, we do this, everything over ten thousand has to go through an R F uh 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 requisition process, we need to get it, we need to look for three competing vendors or whatever they call them in 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 Winchester. And so that's what we've done for all of our long, our all of our fifty three G contracts that are over ten thousand have to do that. So, um, I think, pretty sure.
Well, considering the ten thousand dollars, let's say the person, let's say the person is making um um thirty dollars an hour, all right, or say, call it forty dollars an hour that they're making this, we're looking for a senior person who's who's.
Not at forty bucks an hour.
You're, so they think it might be a hundred dollars an hour?
I'm guessing, because, you know, let's say, because our salary, our our annual salary for a senior person is for, you know, Brian was making over a hundred K.
Right, so that would be.
Thirty five bucks a week. I mean, thirty five hours a week divided by time.
It's like a hundred K is like fifty dollars an hour, it's kind of a half thing.
Okay.
So.
So I'm just, I don't think.
That's what I was trying to say, maybe forty dollars an hour, we could get someone to pinch hit.
Well, that's why, so why I'm giving you this palette. And so what we need to do is find out how much it actually costs, and the key thing is that the planners in a pinch, excuse me, I have no idea where they're at. They could be in California, they could be in Toronto, I don't know where they are, but I think we want someone who has local expertise, because.
I think I remember from the memo that I sent, and maybe I can pull it up on my screen, I wrote up my conversation to, uh with the applicant who declined the offer, and I have to see if I can.
Well, I I don't know that there's a decision that needs to be made tonight, that's all I'm saying.
All right, well, that's good.
But so we need to, if we're gonna go through the interim. So I I think I mentioned we have five applicants, so we'll start up the search committee as soon as possible. We'll take a look and see how much it'll cost for an applicant, for a a consultant planner or a temp planner.
Okay.
But those are the three options we have in terms of getting things quickly. We would have to go for under ten K or find someone that we could uh a contractor under ten K or a part-time employee. But since we don't know any anyone, if you know anyone who's looking to become a part-time planner, um let us know.
You mean for money?
All right, planners in a pinch is local.
Sally, you have you heard of uh this woman who worked for us as a planner in the past, Betsy Ware?
I've heard of her name, and I know that Brian um knows more about her service to the town than I do.
I wonder, I wonder if that's someone that we might.
She's currently a planner, I think, in Newton, or somewhere, she actually has a job.
She is.
Yeah.
Um, so there's two different situations going on here, and I'm sorry that the meeting's running so long, one has to do with needing an R F P if we determine that we need more than ten thousand dollars work of worth of work out of our temp or interim planner, that's R F P number one. And R F P number two is if we determine, and we'll know this after we look at the next five resumes and the screening committee. Um, if it's really difficult to find good people, and we actually do need to use a recruiter to do a national search. And that would be more than ten thousand, so those are two possible R F Ps that we need. But in the meantime, the best thing we can do is get the search committee or the screening committee, excuse me, reconvened so so that we can look together at those five resumes.
That's correct, yes. Um, so I will, I will, I will send it out, and what do you know, um, Brian Manch was already doing some uh some some research for us, but. Yeah, Brian Mancher just sent an email, so I appreciate it, Brian, but my brain is going to say I'm looking for someone to call in adjournment. Um.
I I move that we adjourn.
Yeah, um, so is there a second?
Okay.
If you're awake enough to say second, um, roll call, please, uh, E Ching.
Aye.
Carrie.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
I say aye as well, um, so thank you, everyone, oh, I should note that Richard Leaf sent me an email today, he he said he wouldn't be able to make it for the next few weeks. Um, but he is is excited to join us again in the future. Um, so, uh, thank you, everyone, thanks to WinCam, thanks to Nancy Polkary, recording secretary, thanks to Brian Mancher, assistant town engineer. Uh, thanks to everyone out there in TV land, and uh we will see you in two weeks.
Great.
Bye.
Aye.